Okay, good evening. Today is Thursday, January 28th. It is 6:30. This is a joint meeting between City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a full, we have a quorum in the chambers and Councilmember Jackson is with us virtually, so I am calling the City Council meeting to order. Madam Chair.
And we have a quorum in the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a meeting at 5:30, so we've been fed and we're all here and ready to go. So I'm going to call the P&amp;Z meeting again to order.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I have a couple of things, because you know, it's me and I get to do a couple of things. One of them is, we failed to celebrate Councilmember Peterson's birthday on Tuesday night, but we have a card for him and now we have more people to clap for him.[52.28][52.28](APPLAUSE). My kids have always told me that birthdays aren't a day, they're a week, so we're just helping Councilmember Peterson celebrate that longer. A couple of things, just to kind of get us all on the same page. It's a workshop. There will be no votes taken tonight. This is like the proverbial first step and staff's, the way that this is going to go is staff is going to make some recommendations. And if you are here and really interested in signs, raise your hand, especially if you're in the back of the room. That's what I was thinking. So I have asked the city manager, we're going to talk about signs first. Staff is going to make their presentation with their recommendations. I have speaker cards from three people. If you are wanting to speak and you are not, Reed Sharp, Becky Wumble, or Matthew Mixx, if you would please fill out a request to speak, I would appreciate it. We'll get citizen input and then the two boards will have some conversation and we'll talk about things to move forward. I have already, I've talked to with a couple of you and I know that we've had some conversations, I've had some conversations with the city manager that we, we have some issues to address, but then we also need to be able, even if we can't answer it all tonight, we need to be real clear about how we move forward and how we are able to function between right now with the current codes, the way we have them, and getting to some revisions, because the revisions won't be next, next week. We won't be voting on that on February 9th. So we just, I want to make sure that we have clear expectations from everyone. So, Council, I'd really appreciate you being here. I heard some folks that were not overly happy that we had two meetings in one week, but Planning and Zoning has had two meetings in one night and we appreciate our, our citizens that serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that's all that I had from Council. You will see the work session, but as I said, we're going to be taking 2A number four, the sign standards is what we will be doing first. Madam Chair, do you have anything to add?
Makes abundant sense.
All right. City Manager, turning it over to you. Oh, and I'm sorry, Colin's going to be so mad at me. If you are, and this was our very best way that we could do social distancing and stuff. If you are on Planning and Zoning and you are out on the floor, remember you have to get obnoxiously uncomfortably close to your microphone or no one at home can hear you. And if you are not speaking, if you would please turn your microphone off, that will make it much easier for Colin to take care of things for live streaming Facebook. Mr. Manager, Mr. Hoffman. Turn on your mic.
And so, like I said, you did it more efficiently than I would have done it. Thank you, Council, for being here twice in one week. Thank you, Planning and Zoning Commissioners, for being here twice in one night. And thank you especially, Planning and Zoning Commissioners, for the work you've already done on this important and sort of complicated set of subjects. The staff team has been working really hard over the last few months. As you know, they have been bringing some of these subjects to you along the way. I will point out that the staff team's work has been done completely without the assistance of any outside consulting work. That was a point of discussion we had at the City Council level a few weeks ago and they, I think, done a really good job of comprehensively pulling things together. As the Mayor indicated, we are, we are certain that there's a lot of interest in the sign code provisions in particular. You have a handout that the staff distributed a few minutes ago of all of the PowerPoint slides that we are going to go over. I think you can just turn, if you're going to follow along with the paper, go to slide 53, that's on page 18. That's actually where we're going to start. And as the Mayor indicated, I'm going to ask Jennifer Bills to come up to the podium right after me. She will overview what we think the important outstanding issues are. And again, this reflects already a lot of the public input we've received at the staff level so far. Jennifer will also provide some suggestions on what the, the staff thinks is a good way forward, leading towards that ultimate vote by both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council. We will then invite Citizen Comment. And if you filled out a comment card already, that's great, but if you plan to speak and you haven't filled out a card, that's available on the table just outside the door there and you do plan to speak, please do that and hand that to Anne, the City Secretary before that time. After we receive the Citizen Comment, then we will have a discussion amongst the City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commissioners. We're looking for feedback on what direction the staff should take and to the, to the extent we can get some consensus between both bodies on that, that would be very beneficial. And then at that point, we'll invite Jennifer back up here and she'll go through those other categories, the development process and Development Review Committee items, subdivision standards and the ETJ item and the general code changes. And we'll kind of repeat the process, then we'll have both bodies go over all that. At the very end, the staff has a summary of the staff recommendations in priority order and that should help as, as well. And if there aren't any questions for me, I'll ask Jennifer to come up and get started. And again, that's on page, that's slide 53 in your package. Okay?
Good evening. So yeah, we're talking four main areas and one of the main areas that we've identified and I think the citizens have identified as an issue in the code are signage. So I've kind of broken down two, two kind of areas. Main issues I've heard from applicants and reviewing the sign code and reviewing applications people have turned in. And then issues just that I have seen myself that I think we need some, a little bit more review on. So the first one is what we call band signs. So band signs are, well, are also known as wall signs. So this is the sign that goes on the front of your business on the wall, flat against the wall. So in our current code, as it was adopted, we have an 18-inch max letter size. You can't have any lettering on your wall sign that's greater than 18 inches and the overall height of the sign can't exceed three feet. You're also only allowed one sign on the front facade, two if it's a corner street, like a building that's facing two streets. Internal illumination is not allowed on a band, a monument or a pylon sign. On a band sign, you can get internal illumination with kind of a channel letter type of signed face with, it's called a warrant, which is an administratively reviewed process that has to show how it's, in this case usually complying with the area, how it's continuing kind of, you know, an already established sign. Look for that, that shopping center, street phase, something like that. And also in our new code, we did not permit digital signage. So the digital signs that you see that are existing are existing non-conforming. They were permitted under previous codes or some of them even before we had a sign code. So I'll go over recommendations for the applicant concerns and then I'll go over what staff has seen as thing and our recommendations for our own concern. So I think the main, the mainish place we've had issues is that this is a one-size-fits-all sign code for all of Bastrop. I think we do know that we are trying to recreate some of, you know, the downtown in that scale, but we do have pre-existing buildings that this doesn't necessarily work as well for. So we're proposing to create Highway 71 district for signage, because that is where you're going to have more of your larger signs that need to be seen from the street. So what our current, our recommendation is, is to keep the band sign maximum overall height at three feet with, and then allow three-foot tall lettering or some other, you know, as a byright. And then if you want to increase your wall sign at that point, then you will decrease your allowance on pylons or monument signs. So as it stands right now, you can have a wall sign and you could have a 35-foot tall pylon sign, pole sign, or monument sign in front of your business. So what we're saying is having a trade-off between the two, and I'll kind of actually have an example of, this has gone to ZBA recently. We've had two developments that were kind of caught between codes. Sign permits are the, usually the last permit that's issued on a project. So these projects were started probably back in 2017, 18. By the time they got to the point where they were permitting the signage, our code had changed. So in this case, this is the Family Dollar is just down the street. ZBA worked with them and came to a compromise that they could have four-foot tall letters, so the Family Dollar is all four feet tall. Sign is still externally illuminated and then the, they were limited to a six-foot tall monument sign at the street front. So that's, so they've still got a monument sign, it's limited in height, they got four-foot tall letters, they were fine with the external illumination. So that was what was approved on that. And I will say, some people have commented that the lights there are pretty dim. The reason why the lights on that side are dim is because the overall light output, they were already putting out too much light on the whole site. They overlit the site. So that just feeds into other requirements of our code. The other case is the Cube Smart Self-Storage. They wanted larger signs on the front and side, so ZBA worked with them. The max letter size of, I believe the C is 42 inches tall. The overall height, I think, is eight for the whole sign. And they also did a six-foot tall monument sign and it's actually externally lit there. That has a light bar at the top that's shining down on it. So that, so with our recommendations, you would, they could byright, have the three-foot tall, with three-foot tall letters. And if they want to get bigger, then we would create some kind of trade-off on their monument sign, that that monument sign height decreases as your wall sign gets bigger. Also, we propose allowing internal illumination of pylon signs. We do acknowledge it's hard to externally light a pylon sign, which those ones are usually 35-foot tall in there, but we would need to research some maximum light outputs to make sure it's still compliant with our outdoor lighting ordinance and Bird City requirements. So that is the recommendations. I might have lost slides. So that's the applicant concerns. Issues identified from staff. We have a strict limitation of number of directional signs and directional signs are the, you know, entrance, exits, you know, over here for curbside delivery, those kind of signs. You get one per driveway. For some of your bigger sites, that, they do, they request more directional size, signs, so that would be something we want to look at. We have no language for what is generally called the sign code incidental signs. Those are signs like loading that you would put on, you know, that are just identifiers of some basic things or entrance, exit, you know, on the building itself. And then in the code, sign administrator is a term, the sign administrator is who's approving all the signs. It's not clearly defined. We've defaulted to it's a designee of the planning director, but we just want to make sure that's clear in the code. We also, it's not clear when a permit is required on temporary signage, which temporary signage categories are banner signs that have a limited timeframe, they can be up, construction signs for when a project is under construction, those kind of things. And then our sign authority also extends to the entire ETJ, which is 154 square miles. So that's something what we've, I think I've got my slides a little backwards there. There we go. So for the, the staff concerns, we would like to review standards for directional and incidental signage and make sure those are in line with what is logical. Define the sign administrator. Clarify when an actual permit needs to be acquired for a temporary sign. And also, we would like to start, to narrow down the ETJ to actual major corridors that lead into the city and not the entire ETJ and establish some sign plans for those corridors. So there may be some parts of the ETJ we're not as interested in regulating as others. Those are the staff recommendations on that item. Any?
Ms. Bills, if you'll go back three, I think. I'm trying to slide, there, you didn't talk, that one. You didn't talk about that.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I didn't. Oh yeah, sorry. That was the, skipped ahead. So for channel letters, so channel letters are individual, well, they're letters that usually are mounted on a rail that are lit. So what we are recommending for internal illumination on wall signs is that it is still something that needs a warrant approved by the sign administrator to get, so you can prove, you know, how it's matching the intent of the area. So that, so you could have internally lit signs, which you can now, but it would still have to go through a process to, to review that it's matching the signs in the area. And then we would recommend not allowing digital signs in the city limits.
I didn't hear you, not allowing what?
Not allowed digital signs in the city.
Digital signs, okay. So if you go ahead two slides, is that upper right-hand corner, is that an internally lit channel sign?
The Cube Smart sign, so it's a, it's a channel letter and it's on a rail and the rail is mounted behind the front facade, so you can't see it. So some of the-
But is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So that would be allowed?
Yes.
I'm just trying, this is lots of words.
Yeah, it could be allowed.
I'm just trying to get pictures to words, so everybody knows what we're talking about.
Yeah, it could be allowed by a warrant and that's administratively approved. It wouldn't have to go to the ZBA and all that. And the appeal authority would go to the ZBA. If you don't like the sign administrator's ruling, you could appeal. So those are what we've, what we've seen as the biggest issues on signs, just from what has come through on applications.
I had a question. You had mentioned that you're looking to establish a maximum light output to comply with dark sky and Bird City recommendations. How is it currently, right now, it's not, I guess there's no way of showing that?
So, so right now, the all lighting is external. It has to be externally illuminated and there's, and the lights are shining down, so. But if we're allowing it on all channel letters, we'll have to, we haven't clearly defined a standard for it.
So is it contributing to an overall limit for the site?
And that's an issue we'll need to look at. So signage comes in so late in the project that, and usually the sign applicant does not know the numbers for the site. So that's, that's, it's hard to come, to check compliance on signs. So I think it would be easier to establish just a maximum output for signs rather than trying to-
Could that be accounted for in the approval for the building permit? You know, when, when that is there, that whatever numbers they have showing the put candles or the output on the site, that they save a certain amount for signage or, so we, so we do have an idea?
That, that could be an option.
Wonder about that.
I have a couple of questions. So who's the sign admin?
So right now, it's me. I'm the sign administrator. So I review all sign permits that come into the city.
Okay, great. And can you maybe refresh my memory as to why internal illumination is an issue?
Internal illumination on signs, it does contribute to the overall light output of a site. And we'd, so with an external illumination, external illumination, all the light is required to be focused down, so there's no, the light doesn't shine out or upwards. So that's where we went with the external illumination versus the internal. And I know in our previous code, we did have limits on how much white you could have on a sign, because the more, you know, darker backgrounds don't put out as much light as a bright white background does.
Ms. Bills, was that all you were planning on presenting?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to call the folks that signed up to speak. And the first one I have is Reed Sharp. If you could please, if you'd come up to the microphone, that'll make it where the folks at home can hear you.
And Mayor, when they're finished, I had a comment on, for Ms. Bills also about monument signs, but I'll wait till there's speakers that are signed up today.
Thank you. Mr. Sharp?
All right, well, thank you. I think this is the first time I've appeared before the council here, to be honest. I don't frequent this place very often, so I'll introduce myself. My name is Reed Sharp. I'm the president of First National Bank here in Bastrop. I've been president for 27 years. First National Bank has been in Bastrop 132 years. We were on Main Street for 100 of those years, probably. We have 130 employees. We have 100, we have a $10 million payroll. We pay $400,000 a year in property taxes to the city and the county and the school district. Last year, we originated over $110 million in new loans right here in this community, 250 of which were PPP loans to the $10 to $20 million that were credited with saving 3,800 local jobs in this county. I tell you all this not to brag or boast, but earlier this year, we abandoned an $8 million redevelopment project at the corner of Hassler and 71, primarily because of the new building code and layering and sign ordinances. We spent $200,000 on the project. We spent 30 months of engineering and architectural work. We had 37 separate site plans designed to try to keep two businesses open and we called it quits. And I say this because I had a local business lady come to me and said, "If the First National Bank can't get it done, how can I, as a little business person, get it done?" And I think there's some truth to that. This sign ordinance tonight, I'm not going to get into the layering concept, but I sent this to the city council. This is a building that's next door to us. They filed bankruptcy. It's vacant right now. We've got a tenant that wants to come in and put a sign up, the Bills Building. It's five-foot letters on that building. It looks good to scale. If you go to an 18-inch letter, you can't see that from the highway. It looks silly. I don't know how else to say it. When we talk about getting variances and the little guy, the bank's got lots of money, okay? The way I read the city deal to get a warrant to have internally illuminated letters, it's a $3,500 variance fee, just to be able to come and try to get a variance to the sign ordinance. So I mean, it's not that easy. It's cost prohibitive. It's not good business. And if we're not careful, we're going to kill the goose that laid the golden egg in this community and brought businesses and make this a hub of commerce for several counties. Just keep that in mind as we go forward on this stuff. Tuesday morning, we had an $80,000 ATM snatched and grabbed and drug away and they tried to break into it to steal the money inside of it. I think we need more lighting. I think we need more lighting in our parking lots. I think we need to be able to prevent crime from happening. That's just my thoughts. So anyway, thank you for letting me speak. I'll see you again in another 15 or 20 years. Thank you.
It's always nice to see you, Mr. Sharp. Becky Wumble.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Hoffman. My name is Becky Wumble and I'm here as the representative of the greater business community. I'm here to speak specifically about the sign ordinance. With the best intentions that you could possibly imagine, under every circumstance, sometimes regulatory ordinances have unintended consequences. Therefore, the term unintended consequences has become a common description of the action of government. I believe we are seeing a clear picture of the unintended consequences from the shutdowns that we saw in 2020. The business community believes that this council and Planning and Zoning has a sincere desire to promote healthy economic growth while promoting high-quality standards in the city of Bastrop. The form of a signage on a business must strike a balance with function. And I believe that the rendering that Mr. Sharp shared with the council on January 20th is a clear picture of that. Where form interferes with function, unintended consequences always result. In this case, it means a potential national tenant being lost, goods and services that our community desires, sales tax that's important to our budget, and a big vacant building that does not project a good image. As Jennifer clarified, because I wasn't sure about this, my understanding is that with the ETJ, that the city council has jurisdiction all the way to Cedar Creek High School. A one-size-fits-all approach does not work when it comes to highway. I'm aware of two major national retail chains that looked along Highway 71 and abandoned their plans to locate in Bastrop, mostly due to the restrictive sign ordinance. I'm going to give you a baseball analogy. Even Ted Williams, a widely recognized major baseball, Major League Baseball player, occasionally struck out. The Bastrop Chamber of Commerce believes that this sign ordinance, as well, as well-intending as it was, we swung and missed. But we can adjust and we can not strike out, if we'll do some adjustments in advance. So members of council and Planning and Zoning, you know my heart for this community. I've climbed a billboard twice, once during the small business revolution and then again during the pandemic, to paint a message of staying home. We're building a second house here, so you know I invested here. So I'm going to ask you to be careful, evaluate the information that you have and see how the sign ordinance is affecting and limiting the opportunities that we have and we have an opportunity to make a change. We want our business community to prosper. We have watched the explosive growth all the way around us and so I think we've learned how to manage that growth. But let's not be too restrictive that we kill the potential that we have to, with the destiny that Bastrop has. So thank you for my time.
Thank you, Ms. Wumble.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Dr. Matthew Mixx. I am a chiropractor on Main Street. Just is the name of our office. We've been there 14 years now and some people think we're crazy for, you know, doubling our, our space and attempting to move during a pandemic time, but you know, we have faith in the community and, and we want to grow. And so that's, that's kind of our, our goal right now is to support, you know, our patients and give them more space in this COVID era, but also grow and employ more people for Bastrop. And so in that, we too discovered this sign debacle. And so I was trying to figure out what the intent was and it's written on page two of the article 8.1.001. You actually have an intent there. And the intent, I'll read it. This is what is on the city website. "The intent of regulating signs that are visible from the public fundage is to ensure proper dimensioning placement with respect to existing or planned architectural features, maintain or improve safety, to maintain or improve aesthetic character of the context where they are located, and to provide legible information for pedestrians, not just drivers." And with those in mind, the dimensioning, the size of having a 18-inch sign, you know, a lot of logos, like ours, our Just logo, it has the words in it. And so making our sign that small, you would not be able to see that from the road. And then of course, the aesthetic character. Where we're moving to is part of the Anytime Fitness area. They already have a, an architectural plan and I think it looks beautiful, which is why we're moving there. And to, to have our sign look like the Family Dollar sign with the gooseneck lights over it, quite honestly, I don't want that. I know the owner, Todd, who's here tonight, wouldn't want it either. So I ask that you, you look at this, go back to the intent and decide if, if this portion of the code that was approved in the past really still fits with that intent. and decide if this portion of the code that was approved in the past really still fits with that intent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Mix. That's all the folks that I have signed up. Is there anyone else who was wanting to speak tonight on signs? Okay, I don't see anybody rushing to sign up. So, Councilmember Jackson, you said you had a question for Ms. Bills?
Right, I do. I didn't see it addressed, and maybe I overlooked it, but as you all know, I've had a real concern about monument signs. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm wondering with this, some of these suggestions that are being made, and if monument signs' height and location are being addressed. As you all may remember, I was concerned about monument signs that were close to intersections, whereas they were blocking and they were causing a problem with traffic flow. And I'm still, you know, some of those are pre-existing signs. And I used to think it was because I was driving a smart car, but now I'm in an SUV, and I'm still having a problem with certain signs, we'll just say, corner of Chestnut and Hill Street, but that are blocking traffic visual visibility. And I'm wondering if that's being addressed, or is that going to be addressed with future development of monument signs?
Yes, so in the sign code we have, and in the technical manual, we have a standard for, it's called site triangles. So, when a sign comes in, they have to give us the dimensions so we can figure out that it's actually a geometric math problem, that they're out of the site triangle. It takes into a factor the angle of the corner, the speed of the road, and so you have to set signs fairly far back. And we do check that on new signs, pole signs, monument signs that are coming in at intersections or driveways.
Okay, I heard some of that. I think you were saying something about there's a distance in a triangle or something, but you are addressing it. That's the important thing.
Yes, yes, in the technical manuals, the standards for all of our site triangles.
Okay. I just hadn't followed up, I guess, or hadn't noticed that there was any discussion about it since I brought it up months ago at a council meeting. And I hope that if it's part of the new development or some of the new recommendations, I just really appreciate that, because it does still cause a problem for some existing signs. I know they're grandfathered, but I'm hoping in the future we won't have that problem.
So, Councilmember Jackson, hopefully you can hear me maybe easier than Jennifer. What we voted on in November of 19 addressed the site triangle. So, the monuments signs are a part of the existing code as it stands today, making sure that they don't block the intersection.
Thank you. I could understand, I could hear you clearly.
Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question.
Count for Marinus.
Do we have any, a lot of us in this room remember Bastrop when it was a town of 4,000, 4,500, and we sincerely had dark skies. Does, do we have any figures on what putting back lit signs would do to our?
We do not. We'd have to do some research on that to bring numbers back.
Well, I would recommend us doing that as soon as possible so that we know what we're doing. If we're going to be making changes, I agree that this is probably something we need to make some changes on, but at least we'll know what the effect it's going to have. And I have another concern about Mr. Reed, Mr. Reed Sharp's comments. Oftentimes, council doesn't know all the things that are going on. I think everybody thinks we do. I'm very concerned that this particular development, the Bell's development, went as far as it did and failed. And I think we need to have, council needs to have more information on that. Why did it fail? What was it?
The, I believe the development that Mr. Sharp was talking about was the Starbucks and the drive-thru. Yeah, so.
I can't hear those comments.
I know. So, Mr. Sharp's not at a microphone, but I'll, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong. The issue they ran into was they started the project, it's the Starbucks, so we don't have to all wonder where it is. We know exactly where we're talking about, the Starbucks and the drive-thru. The codes had been adopted, and because the codes want you to bring the building to the front, it made the parking be in the back, and they were trying to keep both businesses open. And I know that Mr. Sharp expressed that if you were on Main Street, it made sense to have your building close to the curb and have that public-private realm. But when you're at the corner of Hassler and the frontage road of Highway 71, it seemed, it would have been helpful if there had been some variations allowed. And I believe that Mr. Sharp and his team visited with the current city manager at the time and staff. And I think it went to his point back and forth several times, and there was a point that Mr. Sharp said, "I'm done." I believe on the Bell's, that is not a done deal. That's a, "Come on, people, 18 inches isn't enough." So, it's two separate projects.
Well, if we can correct the Bell's situation, I'm concerned that we wrote something that is so ironclad that we couldn't have made the Starbucks First National issue go away. I mean, "go away" is not a good term, but that we couldn't have corrected that in conference. How could that have gotten to that point, is my concern?
I appreciate that. One thing I want to make sure that everybody understands, council, after planning and zoning worked really hard, council approved the B3 codes in November of 19. And council, I believe, we gave the city manager at the time, the direct, we had the discussion that we knew the signs needed to be addressed. And planning and zoning, remember, we're all remembering, we got to get that done. That was November, and I think nobody counted on February, March happening, and mask and global pandemic took over. That is not an excuse, and that is not helpful to the business community. But I just want to reconfirm for everyone in the community that planning and zoning's intention and council's intention was that we knew the signs needed to be addressed. And I have one question for Ms. Bills, and then I'm going to call on Councilmember Rogers. The comment was made that applying for a warrant is $3,500. Is that accurate?
Applying for a variance is $3,500. That has to go to the zoning board of adjustment. A warrant that's administratively reviewed is currently $6.
Okay, that's a huge difference. And so, if that's not clear in our code, city manager, I'm going to go ahead and reach out and say that I can speak for council, that if somebody can get their sign approved for $6 as opposed to $3,500, that's something that we need to clarify. Councilmember Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to touch base on some items that you said, and also Councilmember Ennis talked about. The, I would, I am interested on how much difference the lighting, I understand the dark skies, so. But the illumination from the inside compared to a bright light shining on it, the one slide you showed. Sorry, I got to get my old lady glasses on. Slide 58.
Hey, Colin, can you flip back to the presentation?
It's the Cube Smart.
Yeah. So, I understand the bottom, I guess that's the bottom right, and the light shining onto that sign, which I think, now, like, this is just my basic knowledge, what it would be more, it would be better visible, shine from the outside than that glare hitting their sign. So, I don't see how the light shining on it is going to give us less light, you know, from dark skies compared to illuminating inside. So, I think if we're going to, we're going to expect them to follow some rules, I think we should have some evidence of why we want that rule, because right now, we don't have, what, we just decided we don't want it to light from the inside, but we don't have anything to back that up. So, if we're going to expect to make a rule, I think we should have reasons to back up a rule. If not, why make a rule? When I, when the $3,500 variance that you brought up, I mean, I, how about have a heart attack? You had to take me to that ER. And I went online to try to find it in our master fee thing. And the online version of the master fee is a redline version, which I don't understand why the redline version is online. We should have the basic, real version we voted on. But from my understanding on the fee schedule, like I said, it's just my basic understanding here, guys, that we were going to charge someone a fee of what it costs the city to do that particular thing, like to go inspect something, whatever costs the city to inspect your thing, that's what we were charging people so it wouldn't be a taxpayer burden. So, I don't understand how getting a variance of anything costs $3,500 to ask permission. I mean, that's just crazy. I don't know where that ever came from. And actually, I went through the whole sign fee schedule, and I didn't see that variance anywhere. The only place Cynthia showed it to me is it's under a zoning variance, not a, you know, a permit variance.
Part of, with the B3 code, we have, we lumped all of our codes into one, and the fees are still broken out under the old sections of the codes, Chapter 3, Chapter 10, and Chapter 14s. And that's what they're linked to in the Appendix A, so we do need to revise that to reflect the proper chapters.
Okay, I thought that was the whole thing when we were revising a whole master fee schedule, was to make it easier. I mean, you put it online so the basic person can go online and look it up. It needs to be where they can understand it. And to have a redline version online is just, I don't understand. So, the other question I did have, and if you guys remember, I threw a fit when guys came to this sign thing.
I do remember you throwing a fit.
The, and I understand you want the 18-inch letters and stuff, but in our old sign, of course, it was 20 years ago that I got a sign from it, that it depended on how big your building was compared to how big your sign can be. And I think that's important, you know? Just because they're putting a building on 71, they shouldn't get three-foot letters if they're in. Now, I'm going to show my age. Those little drive-through huts, you used to be able to go through and get your film developed, you know?
I don't remember what you're talking about.
They shouldn't be allowed to have a three-foot sign on that little hut. But if they're in that area, they're allowed. So, that's, you know? So, if they have a massive building, like the whole strip mall, they should be able to, their signs should match the coordinates. You just have to measure how many square feet, and that's how much signage you got. So, that formula, even though it's basic, it was easy to use. It was easy for someone that was thinking about opening a shop, whether it's me or First National, they can understand, they can measure their building and figure out how much square footage they had to use. So, and the last thing I wanted to do before we start putting a bunch of permits or a bunch of rules in place in this or any other ordinance, I want us to realize that we only have one person employed to police these, all these ordinance that we write. So, I would prefer us not to write ordinances unless you plan to hire someone else to help the poor girl, because there's no good, it doesn't do good to make rules if nobody's enforcing them.
So, you're speaking to code enforcement?
Right, but that's all these codes. So, I don't want to add a bunch of codes in there, because if Lyle cheats and doesn't go by the codes, and I do, then it's unfair to me unless I call them and tell them to report on Lyle. We just need to make sure that if we're going to write a bunch of codes, that we're willing to pay someone to enforce the codes. So, that was my one and a half second speech.
So, council, I'm hearing the proportionality to the building seems like a reasonable thing. And Ms. Bills, I think you also mentioned that in the old code, there was a percentage of how much white there is, because you really don't want to be blinded by the sign. So, if we had those rules before, that seems like something that's reasonable. Council, are we, is that, I'm understanding, Councilmember Ennis?
I'm going to make sure we're making clear distinctions, and maybe we are. I just got to go back and read my code. But clear distinctions between the major corridors in Old Town and the major corridors and what's going to develop, say, in the new, what's it called, on 304 in Agnes? They're supposed to have some commercial in that development. Well, I mean, to have a sign that's as big as this room on something in that residential development is one thing. It's probably needed on 71. So, are we?
We discussed corridors, but it's not approved. That was part of the, we were going to come back and take care of it.
So, part of, so, yeah, as part of, the code is a one-size-fits-all. The concession that was made during the discussion back in 2019 was, P&amp;Z had talked about a lot about not allowing pole signs. So, we went back and added pole signs back in, so that you can still have a pole slash pylon 35-foot-tall sign. You can also have a 35-foot-tall monument sign along the road, only along 71. If you get into the rest of town, you have to stay to a six-foot monument sign.
I'm not just talking about monuments and poles. I'm talking about, like, we're applying the 18 inches.
Yes, and that was a one-size-fits-all code. That's part of the problem.
And we're not a one-size-fits-all town. That's what we're acknowledging.
Yeah, and so, right now, what we're proposing is just looking at 71. Is that the extent you want us to look at, or?
Well, according to your slide on 59, you're listing 71, 95, 969?
So, that would be for future. That'll be step two. Step one will be to establish within the city limits. Because I will be honest, if someone comes and asks me if they need a permit in the ETJ, I will tell them yes. But if I'm not out patrolling the ETJ at night looking for everyone's signs, so.
Don't ask, don't tell.
To Councilmember Rogers' points, that, you know, for every business along 71, I haven't, you know, noticed if they have any signs.
Council, I recall that we also talked about 95 between Chestnut and 71, given the businesses that are already there, and given that apparently some people like going to College Station. Councilmember Ennis and I don't understand that, that the traffic that goes from 71 down 95 up 21 makes that, that small area on 95 between Chestnut and 71 really kind of an extension of 71. Council, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's what we talked about.
With all due respect to Mr. Sharp.
Yes, with all due respect to Mr. Sharp. He, I'm sure he considers that a major highway to get there.
But part of what will come later in our kind of priority of recommendations was to prioritize 71 in the city limits, having that code amendment come first. But doing a full study of all the corridors on the ETJ would be a later project, because I think that'll take a little bit more work to maybe establish those standards.
Madam Chair, council's taken the majority of time, because, you know, we're that way. Would you like to say anything, or let's hear from your team?
Well, I know how you guys are. I mean, I'm sitting up here with y'all, and you're staring at me, but anyway. Can't make me leave right now. But we have a whole heck of a lot of territory that we need to look at, and not much staff power to do it, either out in the field or within the planning department. And I need to put in a plug for the planning folks, because Jennifer and Allison and Viviana and everybody that works there have done yeoman's work and yeowomen's work. And I applaud them greatly. But when we're looking at the changes that we need to make, we also need to look at common sense. Just because it's not in the code doesn't mean we shouldn't permit it. And anything that would, the $3,500 may be dropping a false seed that I don't have. But I think when we're progressing, that we need to look at what makes sense for a business that's going in. And if it's, we need to take a waiver or an exception while we're working on all of this, we need to do that. We don't want to penalize people that are trying to put people to work, generate sales tax, make a living, because we haven't gotten to the point where we can get it all together. That's all I have to say right now, and I'd like to call on any of the commission members who might have anything that they would like to have been put on.
I would just like to comment on the B3 code, going back to Mr. Sharp. And actually, what Ms. Wumble said too, one-size absolutely does not fit all, and I think we all can agree on that. I about fell out of my chair when I, because I'm a small-business owner, and as Reed says, they've got the bucks. I don't have the bucks. And $3,500 to me for a variance, just to get a permit to see if I'm going to get a variance? I mean, just to pay that to see if I can get a variance is just out of this world. I don't know who, I don't know if Dr. Sila could do that. I don't know who, I don't know if Dr. Silva could do that at Sugar Shack, but... And I think common sense would be for any business. That, to even ask them to do that was just not even logical at all. So I do agree with everyone. I think we have a lot of work that we really need to go back and look at. And, and let's get this right because it's really important for the businesses. We want to promote business. We want to support our town. And we're in a hard time right now with, uh, COVID. So, you know, that among everything else. I think we just, it's really important to get this right, help the community, help the businesses out, and make sure that everything works together.
One thing I want to correct. We've, we've clarified that the sign permit is six dollars. It's, it's not.
The war, the warrant is six dollars. The variance, if you have to go to zoning board of adjustment, is thirty-five hundred.
If you go to zoning board of adjustments, then that's when the thirty-five hundred would kick in.
Sometimes Allen gets to come. So that's, that's why that fee is more expensive.
Because that's in the codes as, uh, section eight point two, where the variance fee. And then when I tried to find the fee, as I told, uh, was telling Dr. Shaw, I couldn't find it under the signs. And then I was explained it was under the zoning fees, which makes no sense either to me, so.
And one of the reasons, as she's saying, um, back to the point of the fee's supposed to cover the cost of it, if ZBA, that's kind of a whole nother animal when it has to go there. There's all kinds of publications that have to be done, and there, there's some costs associated with that. It may not be quite thirty-five hundred, but part of it was, um, and you guys may remember, and, um, Dr. Lassen may, I remember, he made some comments about this, um, at an earlier meeting. And that is, the code was supposed to have some flexibility. A lot of thought went into it, and the idea was to not make it twenty dollars to do a variance, but to have the developments comply with the, with the code that's written. So, so that was part of it. Now, we've got to learn a lesson, and that doesn't, and we never said that the code was going to be etched in stone, but that part of the logic was i- if, if every development's going to have seven variances, you've lost, you've lost the point of all the hard work of, of the code. So just wanted to kind of throw that one out there.
And just one more thing, what Debbie said. Uh, when we were doing the place types, we had a, a period of time where they did not have to pay if they needed to get waivers or something. So I think that's a great suggestion that you made, Debbie, on, on that with the signs also.
Yes, but Chairman Moore, I don't think my city attorney's happy when you say things like, "We'll just permit it even though it's against our rules." I think that makes him nervous. So we'll be needing to find a legal way to do that.
I never said against the rules. While we are looking at the rules, if we can make common sense work as well as the law, I think that's what we should strive to do.
Absolutely. I just, I, Alan needed to know that I knew we still have to follow what's, what's written. That might make, and imagine that, Mr. Johnson.
I'm just curious as to, are the problems self-identified by people seeking, uh, variances? Are, are they just so outraged at the thirty-five hundred dollars that they don't seek a variance? And do we have any code enforcement? Uh, I mean, I, I drove from outside downtown to downtown and thinking, "Well, we're going to talk about signs." And I, I counted six or seven on the way to this building. And I don't, maybe I'm reading the, the sign ordinance wrong, but is there any enforcement at all? Or is it just complaints? And then do we, are, are, are there any complaints? I, I don't know what's, I, and I don't need an answer now. I'm just curious as to how this plays out.
Well, part of the signs that you're seeing were grandfathered, right? So that's part of the, looking at the code and looking at the existing signs. Some of them are, some of them are not. Council member Peterson?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. It's going to, is I agree with the, the Godfather. A lot, a lot of signs got the Godfather into Bastrop. Uh, and we still need to look at what we need to do with future projects and get it right to where we can, uh, get the businesses in here. Because, uh, speaking of grandfather, I've got a well-known chicken outlet that's a nightlight in my bedroom, and it's, it was grandfathered in. So those are the things that we have to look at to, uh, make this thing work and possibly like Chairperson, uh, Moore says, uh, look at some of these things on a, a case-by-case basis. Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment. Um, so I, I was talking to someone who grew up in Bastrop. They no longer live here, but they were here for the holidays. And we were talking about growth. Um, you know, the big thing over the holidays was Elon Musk moving possibly to this part of the country. And, um, and a lot of people coming from California, which is where he lives, um, people are flocking from California for various reasons. But we were talking about the availability of things in Bastrop for, um, that Gen X, Gen Y, um, millennial type of, of crowd that we couldn't anticipate coming in as a, as a result of growth. And we talked a lot about the, when we started writing these codes, it was all about authentic Bastrop, keeping Bastrop authentic. But when we look at it long-term, I think there has to be a happy balance. And that's what I asked him, was how do we get that happy balance? Because we live here, I grew up here, I was raised here as a child. And we like the, I remember the days of being able to leave your front door open and run down the street and run to Tracy's on your bike or your roller skates or whatever. Times have changed, and we kind of have to change with the times. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of Mr. Sharp and Mrs. Wumble speaking, um, about how we don't want to limit ourselves for the future because we do want to grow our city at some point. We want to keep our town authentic, yes. But we also have to look long-range and look at what are the possibilities that we could bring in by not having so many restrictions. So what I would like to ask of counsel is, when we're, when you're reviewing these codes, I know we sometimes think five years. Sometimes we might have to think twenty years. Sometimes we might have to think beyond what's immediately in our face because I would love to see a big shopping center because I love to shop. I would love to have a big outdoor shopping mall or a big, um, a big water park like they just built in Flugerville, Round Rock, wherever it was. But if we're so limited and restricted on what we allow people to do, we won't get that business. So I would, I just ask of counsel, keep an open mind long-term of what type of business we could actually bring without so many restrictions. But still keep our authentic Bastrop in place, if that makes sense. There's got to be a balance.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
You know, I think it's a general consensus that, that, that sign ordinance needs to be addressed. I also think there needs to be a clear understanding that when we adopted the B three codes, it was not meant to be a stagnant document. It was meant to be a, a living document. And we knew at the outset that there were going to be circumstances, dynamics, and changes that going, that were going to require us to make changes. And I think that we need to address the dynamic changes. We did not know at that point in time that Tesla would be moving here. We didn't know at that time to be hit with a COVID. We did not know at that time that we'd be changing city management. So there's a lot of issues out there that we need to address, and we need to address them collaboratively and collectively. And I, I, I really want people to understand that when we adopted these, this was just over a year ago when we adopted these. And we had said at that point in time that we wanted to review the sign ordinances as soon as possible. And these other things got in the way. Again, no excuses, no excuses. We, we should have done it, but there's been a lot of things on, on everybody's plate. Now's the time for us to address them. And I think that for the growth and the managed growth of our community is something we need to address now.
So counsel, I'm hearing a pretty unanimous, um, because we've got other subjects to get to. On the signs, um, I would like, the city manager, I, I would like us to look at, um, I really like the idea of maybe we waive that six-dollar permit fee for the administrative approval for a three months or however long it's going to take to get the new regulations in place. And, um, I think we've, we've all heard some pretty consistent feedback of the corridor, particularly seventy-one and ninety-five between Chestnut and seventy-one, um, the idea of internally illuminated signs, and I might not be using the right words, Ms., but the channel and the whatever, um, the per, not having, uh, having a control on the percentage of white because we don't want white beacons, we don't need nightlights. Um, I got a call yesterday from someone who was talking to me about the sign, and I said, "I appreciate that you want folks to find your business, but I also don't want to get phone calls two weeks later, but from the residents behind you that are saying, 'I've got a nightlight I wasn't counting on.'" So again, it's common sense and balance goes a really long way. Um, your idea, the, the staff recommendation of three-foot sign and three-foot letters, um, maybe a proportion, go back and look at the proportionality to the, to the building size. Um, but again, three foot sounds great, but maybe that's not practical in all, in all circumstances. So, um, my understanding is you were looking for some feedback tonight. You would bring it back to our good friends at Planning and Zoning. You guys would do some vetting, and then it would come to counsel. Am I anywhere close, city manager? Is that where we are? Um, I believe of all the items that we're going to talk about, I think we can pretty unanimously agree signs is top list because we made it top when we approved the codes back, um, back in, at the original approval. So, uh, we can talk about at the end of the meeting what's priority number two. And, and, um, counsel, I, we need to reserve the right if there's something else that's more important. But I am hard-pressed to know anything more important than signs. And I would hope that we would find an intermediate way for folks to have a way forward because I don't want people waiting for three months because they're waiting for Planning and Zoning that meets once a month, and then two readings of counsel. And all of a sudden, that's just time, 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 and time is money. So if we can, um, if, I've, I've got confidence that between city manager and city attorney, you guys can come back with some recommendations for us for the interim. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
I would just ask, as we look at, 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 uh, backlit signs that, uh, that we address if panels get broken so you don't have that bright light shining? There should be some sort of temporal factor built into our contingency plan should panels get broken. So I would ask you all to look at that, too.
Yeah, can I just throw in there? Also, I, I think we need to kind of look at Main Street as its own, its own entity. I, I, I do think that plays a really big part. Uh, the reason I'm in Bastrop is because of Main Street. They're really founded a very charming, uh, part of Bastrop. And I know we have, we talked about authentic Bastrop. What's our DNA? What do we want to be? So I agree with you that we need to kind of revisit some of that and realize we can't do that everywhere, but we really need to protect it where it is. And, um, I think those businesses and the people that move here are, that's a big part of it.
Absolutely, and the, the current code is in place for Main Street. And have we gotten a lot of variance requests or issues with Main Street?
No, no, none for Main Street.
All right, everybody okay? Yes, sir, you need to come to a microphone or no one can hear you.
Sorry, I, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. I just more had a question. I wasn't sure what a warrant was versus the signed variance. So the warrant was six bucks, but I wasn't sure what that actually was.
The, I'll let Ms. Bills answer you.
So throughout the code, there's specific things that can get warrants to, um, that are administratively reviewed that have, um, the ability of, right now, this is Development Review Committee reviews. And, um, based off of the three main criteria, the, the intent of the code and then the intent of each section of each chapter, as, um, Mr. Mix read, each, each chapter has its own intent. Um, we base those warrants off of that. So in the wall sign section, it specifically calls out that channel letters, internally lit channel letters can be approved by a warrant. What it doesn't say is, it, so it, for size variances, so getting the bigger letters, bigger overall signs, that needs a actual variance. And that process in the sign code goes to the zoning board of adjustment. So that's the, what's the expensive fee. We have had three, um, properties that have applied for that in the last year. Um, two of them were the, um, mini storage and, uh, family dollar.
We may be needing to clean that up. Council member Rogers?
That's what I was going to comment. Maybe make that, what you can, what you guys can do at the staff level a little bit wider with, a little bit more, especially signage. Signage is so unique to that business. I mean, it's their logo, it's their style. So it's really hard to box that into left and right and one by two. So allowing the staff to have a little bit of freedom to, to make their best decisions. I mean, they know what they're talking about. You guys know the town. So I think when we ever, when we write this, to give them a little bit of freedom before they have to go off to the, the big guys and cost them money, you know? So I think that's one thing to write in there.
Okay, does that help?
It does, yes. Lastly, I would.
And would you tell me your name, please? Because we have.
Clayton Johnson, I'm sorry. I'm actually part of the community. I've been here, uh, roughly twenty years or so, um, off and on. I kind of lived in Austin for a little bit, and I'm back now.
That's pretty good because you look like you're twenty-one to me.
Well, I appreciate it. Um, but I've been working for the business I, I'm with now for ten years. So we're actually interested in trying to get in. So I'm trying to get a little bit more information on the background of things. So I'm just kind of sitting in. Um, the last thing I had was, I was told there is actually a master sign, uh, plan as well that you can, I guess, apply for. And I think it's like six hundred bucks or so. But I wasn't sure if that would be a better route for us to take or if we should just wait. Um, we're looking to probably come in, probably start the project around March or so.
What you, what I suggest that you do is when you, and I'm not saying you have to leave. When you choose to leave, out on the counter, you can find one of Ms. Bill's cards. And if you'll give her a call, I bet she's going to be very happy to visit with you and give you some advice for your specific project.
I appreciate y'all, thank y'all.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, is there anything else we need to discuss on signs? Or we think we've pretty well got it? Okay, counsel and Planning and Zoning, we're an hour in. Only four more things to do. Um, do you want to keep going, or do you want to take a quick break? All right, they say let's rock and roll. And if you were here about signs, we're happy for you to stay with us all night. But if you're like, "I got other things to do." Goodbye, Dr. Mix. So, all right, y'all have a good evening. Thank you for coming. We really appreciate you helping us make good decisions. All right, are we going back to one, or what are we doing, guys? All right, so we're on two A, item number one, Development Process and Development Review Committee.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. I'm going to take the first piece here, and then we're going to hand it back off to Jennifer because she does this much better than I do, so.
Of the handout, right?
Yes, we're going back to page one of the handout, sorry. So again, we're here just about, um, building a flexible document that meets the community's intent and purpose, right? That's what we talked about a year or so ago. We adopted it in twenty nineteen. We updated it a little bit in twenty twenty. Again, we knew it was a living, breathing document. So over the last year, while we've been implementing this, we've been writing things down for an entire year, and that's why we're bringing them to you tonight. Um, we touched a little bit on this. We're going to talk about the development process and the DRC subdivision, ETJ standards, and some general code changes. And I think we've already discussed signs, uh, ad nauseam. So, so what we're going to, what we'd like to do[1662.46] ad nauseam. So, so what we're going to, what we'd like to do is, is part of the development process, uh, for the, and the Development Review Committee is to create an administration chapter. Um, and what you'll basically do is we have a technical manual now, which tells you it's the go-to guide for how to use this document. Um, it's a separate document and a lot of time it gets missed. So what we're going to do is weave that into the front and make that an administration chapter. So it'll be chapter one technically, then everything else will be, the old chapter one will be now the new chapter two and so on and so forth. Um, and then the remainder of that will make its way into the development manual, but that's going to be our how-to guide and it'll be right at the front of the book. So that's the first change we want to make. Um, so it'll add some clarity and to the approval and the appeal process. So what we have is a handy dandy chart here, um, that shows you where everything is appealed to, whether it's appealed to P and Z, if it's appealed to council. But we don't tell you is who approves it. So we're going to add this nice little other column there to tell you who approves it. If it's approved administratively, if it's approved by, uh, the council or P and Z. Um, the composition of the Development Review Committee or what we always say is the DRC. I know we throw a lot of acronyms out. So again, that's the, that is a body of people that functionally review all of the plans that come in. And this is a list of the departments that have someone provided to do functional plan review. So it's the Public Works Department, Planning, Fire Department, Engineering, Building Inspection and Bastrop Power and Light. We're unique here in Bastrop and we have some different water providers, different electric providers. So we also include outside agencies such as Bluebonnet Electric, um, Aqua Water Supply, and then the WCID for Bastrop County there in Tahitian. Uh, so they also do plan review with us. Um, we also keep our meetings open to all the departments that they'd like to attend because it really does affect everybody. Um, and we send out a, a, a weekly, um, schedule of what's going on and we send that to the BDC. We also send that to Bluebonnet, Aqua and the Bastrop County. So if there's something that piques their interest and they want to attend, we're happy to let them come in and see how the sausage is made, if you will. Um, so part of that warrant process that we were just talking about, we really want to streamline it. Um, so we want to talk about when it's appropriate, what's the criteria and who approves it, right? So to, to break that down, if there's a deviation to the standard, but not to remove it completely. So if you'd like to deviate, if we can give you a 5% warrant in, in, in the scale of things, that should be done administratively, the freedom that you were just talking about, right? So we really want to clean that up. And it's got to meet those big three, like we talked about, geographically sensitive, right? There's a gully in the way, that's a great reason not to put a road in, things of that nature, um, that it's authentic to Bastrop and it's, and it's physically sustainable. So that's the big three. Um, and what will happen now is we take a vote as a body, but we'll change that and the director will be doing the approval. So there'll be one accountable person for every time something's approved and it won't be a conglomerate of different departments that are all voting, um, without a whole lot of context. So that's how we'll fix that. So when we talk about, we talked a lot about doing different when we were going through the code. If something was different and it wasn't written in the code, we'd bring it back to council. So again, that's when we talk about the warrant process. What we have is a neighborhood regulating plan, which allows us to take care of something and approve it at a staff level if it's under 3.4 acres. Uh, but we really don't have anything for infill smaller than 3.4 acres. So we're going to bring back a process for that. So that small infill stuff, that really gets lost, that, that it needs to be written in. Um, but what happens to the process if you can't get a warrant and we can't approve the neighborhood regulating plan because you absolutely don't want to follow the code? Um, or something smaller and they, and they're not interested and it has to go to council, this would be the steps. So we'll hold that pre-application meeting still. Um, we'll discuss the property, the existing conditions, track requests, any necessary warrants. It'll be reviewed by the DRC, approved by the director. Um, and the same thing, uh, with, with the plans for these things that are smaller than 3.4 acres. Uh, this is the council process. Sorry, I need to advance one more slide. Um, so again, it's all those exact same steps. We'll check for the warrants and if the warrants cannot be given for some reason, because it's outside that scope and that flexibility that you provided staff, that's when it will come to council. Um, what we don't have is a fee associated with that. So we'll have to establish a fee. Sounds like we're going to look at the fee schedule anyway. So it's a great time to establish a fee for that. Um, we'll also, if the process varies by scenario for some of those smaller 3.4, we may bring it here for council. Yes, sir.
With this process of taking care of Mr. Sharp's development over there on 71 and-
It certainly would have. It would have.
Good.
That's right. Um, also in the, we, when this was started originally, if you remember, there was a moratorium on drainage. Uh, but what we did in the meantime was we had a small enhanced permit review process for smaller projects. Cause our, our manuals says anything over 10,000 square feet of disturbance or 5,000 square foot of building, which is a pretty good sized project, um, it really doesn't have a small drainage plan for that. It ends up being a larger, more expensive, uh, costly engineering project, right? So, which is great, but I think if we're at a residential level, it's under 3.4 acres, it's a pretty small something, we can tell you how much impervious cover and what it should be and we can prove that right here at a staff level. It should be much easier, much quicker. The city engineer can sign off on it and then we'll be able to move forward. And I think that would, this is one of the areas where we see a lot of, oh my goodness, I gotta hire an engineer. Um, this is crazy, right? So that's what they say. So here, this is how we're going to fix it. Uh, but what we need to do is officially codify it. While we had that process during the moratorium, when we adopted the codes, that went away. So we need to put it back into the codes.
So we already know the words that work.
We already know everything to do. We're just going to stick it in there. So it's really just changing the text. We already know what works. The problem is we erased it when we adopted this code. So now we need to bring it back in and codify it. Um, we need to adopt a zoning place type conversion table, um, because we all know what P5 means and P4 means and P3 means, but everybody else does not know. So what we'd like to do is adopt a conversion table that's also in the book. So they can look and say, hey, this is industrial and it equates to EC, right? Or this is commercial and it equates to P5. So that's one of the other changes we're going to request. Um, and then we'd also like to create a process for amending existing, um, PDDs, right? So plan develops, we have a couple of them all over the city. And what they've done in those, um, ordinances originally was they went back to the base zoning. So they would say, it's the same thing that's allowed in chapter 14 of the City Code of Ordinance. Surprise, surprise, there's no more chapter 14. So what happens is they come back and they're tied to R lot occupancy standards. And it, and it messes up what they have previously built, right? So now they have to go closer to the road. Their parking can't be in that layer. It's got to be in the third layer when, when all their other development, um, is already based on some completely different zoning. So we need to have a standard for that and how we're going to fix it. Um, this is just what, uh, example of what we sent out during the, and it's pretty small, so it's hard to read. But if you remember when we notified for all the zoning, we put out a conversion table. We just want to make sure that we cleaned that conversion table up because we caught a few mistakes in here. And so we'd like to, this is not what was mailed out, this is the previous version. So we're going to have that cleaned up, um, and make sure that it matches. Again, this is that lot occupancy I was talking about. Um, everything currently now would default back to that. So we just need a process-
Can you go to the previous slide?
Mm-hmm.
Let's not call them existing classifications because they've all been rezoned. Let's call them previous or prior to B3 or something like that.
Right.
Because that will confuse people.
That's right. This is a copy of the notice that I, so what's going to happen is the P1 will be the existing classification now and then the new place type will be, or addition, or something to that.
You know what I'm saying?
It needs to be cleaned up, yes.
The, the, the column's going to matter because we've rezoned everything and that's going to, we don't need to confuse people when we're trying to clarify things.
Absolutely agree. So we're going to adopt a chart that makes sure that it tells you what's alike for alike. And that's the plan. Again, just a lot occupancy, um, just an example of what would, what we would, what we would, they would fall back to. Um, so we need to write a process for that and make sure that everybody's okay with it. Um, with that, I will hand this off to Jennifer, but I'm happy to take any question or public input you have on that section.
Councilmember Ennis?
Can you send us, uh, copies, uh, digital copies of the, since this is so small, I'd like to-
Absolutely.
Just put it in a drop box.
We will put it in the drop box and we will put it online, um, for the audience to review if they like.
Great, great. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other questions? You were good.
Yeah, because I can't read this slide and I can't read this piece of paper.
But other than that, you're on top of it.
That's what I was asking for.
All right. You're good to go. Um, Planning and Zoning, any questions for Mr. Jobe from you guys? Okay.
So for, this is the, um, second of the four topics we're talking about tonight is, and we've talked about this in previous presentations, both at the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council, um, back, I'm trying to remember, November, I think. Um, I went over kind of just a recap of where we were on subdivisions and where we were on subdivision standards in the ETJ. So that's, um, in our list of things that we need to come back to y'all with specific standards to adopt. So just a, you know, really quick recap within the city limits, we have a 720-foot base block grid we've adopted and it's on the transportation master plan. Um, after that, our block sizes, street types, development patterns are all linked to our character types and our place types in what is essentially the zoning code part of the B3 codes. When you get into the statutory ETJ, extraterritorial jurisdiction, that's the one mile outside of our, uh, city limits. We have the, uh, 720-foot, uh, block grid is, uh, is extended out into that one mile area. Um, but we don't have the character districts or the place types because we don't have zoning out there. So we don't have the, um, any block standards, street types that are required, um, at that level. In the third area that we, um, have a subdivision authority, it's a voluntary ETJ area A. So that's the part of the voluntary ETJ that opted in to being in the city of Bastrop's ETJ that, um, we've agreed to the, with the county that we regulate area A and they regulate area B under their, um, codes. Other, um, we do not have any other subdivision standards other than what is in state law that they're required to do a plat if it's greater, um, if it's less than five acres or it's greater than five acres and they're extending utilities. So those are, um, but the stormwater drainage manual does apply to all three of those areas. So that's the, that's the one overarching regulations. When they do a plat, we are looking at the drainage on it. So just to give you some context of where we are in the world, this is the, um, we, we even, we've started to include the city of Austin's ETJ on the map because they are in Bastrop County. So the, um, in the middle, you see the city limits of Bastrop. The dark green area is our, um, uh, one mile statutory ETJ. The middle green area is area A of the voluntary. And then the lightest green area that you see is area B of voluntary ETJ. And the blue area that you see is the city of Austin's ETJ because theirs goes five miles out of their city limits. And at, every time they annex, they, um, it automatically pushes out further into Bastrop County. So any of the land that didn't opt into our ETJ is automatically in Austin's ETJ. So you can see where they overlap. Those light green areas are still regulated by Bastrop County, not, uh, the city of Austin. Uh, as we get a little closer in, just to give context of how far apart and not really far apart some of these things are, the yellow area is our Aridale Historic District that we adopted with the code. So that's kind of our core part of town. The green boundary that you see, um, is our wastewater CCN. So that's where we can serve wastewater. And then, um, uh, it's counsel, um, at your Tuesday meeting had a presentation from the BDC about, um, doing a wastewater study in the ETJ. And so that red area is the area where, um, the BDC was looking at doing, um, a study to see about providing wastewater in that area. As you can see, it's in area A. So if wastewater is available in that area, which would be great, it would keep water quality improved, but allow development to become a lot denser. And we don't have any lot standards. Um, we don't have any block requirements in that area. So it could be really dense development that's not in any kind, in an orderly manner, um, laid out. So, and that's a, the closer view. And you can see where our, uh, grid, the white lines is where we've established the grid two with our, in our ETJ. So just to kind of back to why is it important? Uh, orderly development. We like to use that word. Um, and we have some examples here and a little bit of some disorderly development. Um, our wastewater CCN does extend into our statutory and some of the voluntary ETJ areas. So those are areas that could become our wastewater customers. Um, a lot of area A is, is in the city's watershed. That is the, the part of the ETJ that feeds into the Colorado River, um, that is both, uh, affects our water quality and our, uh, potential for flooding. Uh, we have major gateways in the ETJs that feed into the city. Um, if there's poor connectivity in those areas that focuses traffic to one point, you get traffic congestion and future accidents. And our, um, emergency services do, um, help respond when, uh, the county or the ED, ESDs get overwhelmed. So some examples of disorderly development, these are a little hard to see. Um, but some of these lots in here, they, they all take access at a 10-foot strip at the front, but they go all the way back, um, for a lot, uh, ways. In this area, we have Lone Star Circle. It's our favorite circle, um, for the planning department. There's a street there. There's not, all of it is a public street. It's a, some of it's a private street, some of it's a public street. It's hard to determine, um, if they can build. Some of them have subdivided out through deeds, um, in the middle of the lot that has no street frontage. Here's a, an example of, um, bad connectivity. Uh, if you zoom out on this area, this, by not connecting these two, um, roads through, um, it's, that person on the south has to drive like three miles to get to the person on the north. Um, again, and we'll send you this, but these, um, we have, uh, these are flag lots. So almost all these lots, my pointer is not working. There it is. All these lots take access at one point. What should have been a city, what should have been a street becomes an access point for multiple lots. Sorry. It's even more pronounced. Um, you can see where that dark red line is. There are multiple stacked, uh, flag lots that go, reach all the way up to those properties on the north. Again, here we get stacked, stacked flag lots. So, but they're all, but they're addressed off this main road. So when, uh, public safety is trying to come out and serve someone, you're at McDonald Road, but you're that third house on a private street or private driveway that's not necessarily addressed. These are same kind of situations stacked and then they are starting to further stack themselves into, um, flag lots. This is an example of, uh, poor connectivity. This entire subdivision has currently one way in and out for over 50 houses. Another example of, uh, poor connectivity within the subdivision and back out to the main road. This is a local example. And we have had people inquire, how, how could we get another road that connects back to the east or west, um, to allow Piney Ridge, uh, another way in and out. And this one is kind of just hard to define. Um, this is some really bad family deed divisions got arise. So these lots are about 150 feet wide and over 10,000 feet long. So by not having any lots dimensions, um, and then they've come in and deed divided out and each family member got a tent. So it, it, it leads to, you know, it's, it's hard to transfer this property. It's hard. If someone in the middle decides they need to try to get out and no one else will participate in their driveway with them. It's, this is disorderly development. So to solve these issues, um, one of the things we're looking at, and this seems maybe a little counterintuitive, is to remove the grid requirement in the statutory ETJ, the one mile. And instead, in the one mile and the voluntary ETJ, replace that with a 700, uh, a 720-foot max block length. So you don't have, you're not following that strict grid white line that's on the map, but you do have to, you can't have a block that's any bigger by seven, than 720 by 720 or a perimeter of 2,880, uh, feet. That's still, that's 11.9 acres is what that block becomes. So inside that, you could still subdivide it further, but you can't, you can't get a block bigger than that. It's a farm lot. So this is one farm lot is what that dimension is, 720 by 720. But it would give people some flexibility on where they place those and, um, they could have some trade-off on, maybe it's not a strict 720, but it's a 740 by 700. You know, there's some tolerance in there.
In your spare time, because you really don't have a whole lot, it would be really cool to, and you don't have to do it for every one of those, but am I, would you guys like to see what a 720 by 720 would look like on top of this to see kind of how different it would be to give us a feel for, you know?
Onto the ETJ or-
Pick a couple of your favorite disorderly-
The examples?
Yes.
Examples and say, if, if we had this rule, this is what those lots would have
to look. I think that would give us a better-
Yes.
-visual of what we were talking about.
We can do that, yeah.
Councilmember Rogers? Okay.
Um, one of the other, so with, without having those, you know, drawn out, you have to put roads here. It, it loses that requirement for connections back to an existing road. So we would recommend adding activity requirements. So you have to have a minimum of two connections for a development of, of over 30 acres. And that ties back to the fire code. That's what the fire code requires. And then after, for every 50 units over that initial 30 units, you'd have to do another connection. So that requires more connectivity back out of the section. It doesn't talk about the internal connectivity, just, that's the external connectivity. Um, and then also what we would like to look at extending stormwater drainage permits, uh, for development outside of subdivision. We have the regulatory authority, regulatory authority to do that. At the present, we're not looking at that, but in our drainage manual, we look at anything, um, that's a 5,000 square foot of, um, impervious cover or 10,000 square feet of, um, act, of land disturbance. So we would look at how, how we could apply that and maybe work with the county, um, with their disturbance permits to, to make sure that we're using that same standard, um, for all of the ETJ. And it would be non-agricultural because agricultural definitely disturbs more than 10,000 square feet. Uh, so, uh, some, with those standards in the ETJ, we would look at a minimum lot width, which would also include a minimum width to depth ratio. So that would, um, preclude those long skinny lots that do, are going to have to be broken up another way in the future, um, potentially with no access. Um, and have a minimum driveway spacing to look at, um, with the development to, so you don't get those driveways stacked up, one right next to the, another, but which is what the flag lots tend to do.
What do you think the minimum lot width, what kind of numbers are, do you have in your head?
For minimum lot width? Yeah, 55 and a half feet is-
Is that in your head or Trey's head?
It's in both of our heads. We've talked about, because 55 and a half feet is the minimum to put in a road. So if you need to get access to the back in the future, you'd have enough room to put in a road. At 10 feet, you don't. So-
Gotcha, gotcha.
And then- And then spacing, we'd have to look. We would, at our first glance, would be spacing would be based off classification of roadways there are with the traffic manuals. So along with subdivision, one of the other issues we run into frequently is the, the concept and, you know, approval of private roads. Our code does not allow a development to be built with a private road. It has to be a publicly dedicated and accessible road. All lots have to have public street frontage. Those lots that you saw that were stacked one on the other, it creates access issues for the person at the end, maintenance issues that emergency services can't get to the back lot, addressing issues, and sometimes jurisdiction issues because if it's a private road, the sheriff is not going to come out and enforce speeding, and they're not going to come out if you have an accident on it. It's, you know, it's a private road. So it's not, not a public road that we, us or the county would be enforcing. With a private road, usually what you're looking at is an access easement. They're privately owned and they're, and maintained and usually across multiple properties. Where this has come, where we have the most issue with this is we do have lots that exist on private, private driveways that existed prior to our legal lot date, which was April 20th, 1981. If you have, if you were in the same shape and configuration prior to that date and you have public road frontage, you're eligible for a plating exemption. So one of the things we've, we've talked about looking at is for those properties that existed prior to that date, if they have a, an existing maintained private road and they have a maintenance agreement to maintain it, we could provide a plating exemption for those. Or if we want some other date that's not 1981, that would be something we could, we'll discuss when we bring back the more formal language. The other thing we've talked about is-
Ms. Bill, so, I'm sorry to interrupt, but does this create standard conditions on those, on those access roads?
Yes. That's what we, that's one of what we want to establish is a minimum level of maintenance and, and that there's an agreement by the property owners that they are maintaining it.
And are we building into it or should we build into it? Is it recommended that we build into it if those, if those roads aren't maintained to, to a specific standard or some standard that it creates a life safety issue? Are they waiving their right to, to emergency services if it's not maintained?
I would have to get legal on-
I agree.
You made Alan take his glasses off with that one.
So I have a question, I'm sorry. On that maintenance, so who goes out and makes sure they're keeping it up?
Where it would come into play is when people come in for new plating exemptions. The county checks with us to make sure the lot is considered a billable lot before they can get a permit. So we'd be able to issue that letter and say, yeah, go ahead, issue that permit. They're meeting our regulations. So I will say there are some private roads out there that are well-maintained. There are some that are definitely not. But there are some that, that you look at the aerial maps and they do look like a road. So. The date, yeah, we were tying, we're tying it back currently to April 20th, 1981, which is our, the date we adopted subdivision regulations.
Alan?
Mayor, Pro Tim and Council, I think we can propagate some standards for private driveways, private roads in terms of dimensions and materials and those sorts of things. I do not know how we would go about having some sort of a waiver or agreement regarding the life safety issue you mentioned. So that's something we'd have to look into further before we did it. I have not seen that before. It's either public and we have standards and we have access, or it's private and there's a reason for health safety services not to access properties that way. That is, and not accessing, refusing to access because the roadway isn't wide enough or maintained does not create an extra level of liability for the service provider.
Thank you, Alan.
So the next topic that we've talked about before is our plating exemption. So the lot of record or legal lot date is one of the plating exemptions we have. We've, we're, it establishes when a permit can be issued without the property actually being formally One of the things we want to do is clean up the code. We have a lot of record requirements in one section. We have the exemptions in another. They really should be in the same spot. And again, yeah, the existing lot of record can be exempted from plating if it existed prior to 1981, has public road frontage, and doesn't need to extend utilities to take access.
So can it have two of those three?
It has to have all three.
Well, that's, we, because Council, we know this is the lovely, do you have a legal lot, which is just a crazy conversation. And so when folks are on a street like, I don't know, Pecan, and they have a mailbox out front and they have utility service, but they can't prove that their lot existed in 1981 without extensive research at the county courthouse, which makes them feel like they're dying in bureaucracy. Is there any, that's why I'm saying, can it be two out of three? I mean, how, is there a way to address that?
Well, that was, so if it's not, if we don't exempt things that happened before 1981, there's nothing to stop someone from on Pecan Street that has a large lot, deed dividing it out and coming in and wanting to. I mean, if, if we, we'd have to do all the research to prove that they, I mean, if they don't have to meet a date, then they don't have to meet a date. They could-
Or we could change the date.
Or, well, Alan, do you have an opinion? So this is, most cities use the date that they adopted their first subdivision ordinance.
That is true, Mayor and Council, because you don't have to plat unless your county requires it or your city requires it inside the city limits. So that first date, when you require that land to be platted before you convey and transfer title, that's usually the date that we go back to.
Councilmember Ennis is looking at you with a not, not happy or confused. Where are you, Councilmember Ennis?
You know, this has always been one of my issues, is a lot of record.
Yeah.
Somebody who's lived on a piece of land for as long as you can imagine, and they don't have a lot of record, and you go, but, you know, I think it's been explained to me that I'm okay.
And I thought we were gonna, and I know this was before COVID, but I thought we were going to start through town and go from one end to the other because we were kind of back to the, you're, you got a loan on it. There's meets and bounds of it somewhere. To tell somebody you need to go prove that your lot existed before 1981, there just, there still needs to be a better solution than what we're currently doing.
And part of the issue is because, yeah, it does take going to the county courthouse. So we'd have to have a staff member dedicated to go in and doing that. We get a lot of these requests, more than most cities do, just the way the city builds out. And the county's records don't, are not online previous to like 1995.
So if it's taking time for somebody who knows what they're looking for, we can imagine how long it's taking a resident who doesn't even know that there's records at the county courthouse. And that, that's kind of been part of the problem. And I, and I thought at one point we were talking about starting on one, because it's not like it's all nine and a half acres. It's, it's, you know, it's not at Riverside Grove. It's not in Hunter's Crossing. It's, it's a, probably inside that yellow area is where the problem is.
And all of the ETJ. That's where we actually have most-
That's where we get the most. Well, the person who called me that was flabbergasted by it all lived on Pecan Street. So-
There are some on Pecan, yeah.
Yeah.
And usually, we, usually what the first step is, they bring in their deed and we highlight their current deed. Usually you can trace back through that, the documents they need to go pull at the county. Because it references the previous sale, and that usually references the previous meets and bounds, and it references the documents that they need to go pull.
And the county doesn't have their records online, so this cannot be done.
Not prior to 1995.
Oh, my gosh.
And we, and we have done that before. We will go down to the county and pull the records for people. But yeah, it does, it takes a lot of time.
This is not as important as signs. I'm not trying to say that this needs to jump to number one, but this is not going away. And we, we need to come up with a better solution than what we're currently doing, in my opinion. Councilmember Ennis?
And for clarity's sake, say my lot. There've been two owners since 1913. And it's been the same dimensions all these years. And I'm not a lot of record, right?
No, you are. You're not, your lot is not a lot of record. The four feet you bought in like 1996 is not part of that original lot.
The what? Oh, yes, the two feet.
The two feet. However, would that, so that, that's where these kind of things come in, is that someone buys the four-foot strip of their neighbor's property and adds it to theirs. And they did have an original lot, but they've added to it and it's changed the lines. But that's where the real, that's typically where in town our issues have come from. And I've actually talked to people, I talked, when we were doing all this two years ago, over somewhere, I can't remember which street. Depending on which, which surveyors you wanted to believe, the guy in the middle lost about 11 feet of his property. Because they were four different surveyors over the years. They all had, they all recorded different deeds. And depending on whose deeds you believed when he went out and surveyed, he could lose 11 feet. And they had like a handshake agreement on where his property lines were that day. And I suggested that he should probably, if they'd all come and plat, would solidify that for him. And they would not have a question every time the next property conveyed because the next guy may have a survey that says he owns five feet of his lot. So that's where the deed division over the years, different surveyors find different property plans or use the rock at the corner. We still have some of those that they, when they go far enough back.
So Councilmember Ennis, you caused the problem when you bought two more feet. You, we've identified the problem.
Always the bad boy.
Bought his original lot, yes. It meets the lot of record requirements as long as he's building within that. When he wants to build then, pass into that two feet, that's when he's going to have to plat that into the property.
Okay. It makes my head hurt. Keep going.
It makes our head hurt too, trust me. So in, in addition to the lot of record exemption, there are other plating exemptions that can be included in the code. And the ones we're suggesting that we add to new plating exemption requirements is an exemption for public-private utility infrastructure. So that would be a substation, a wastewater plant, a water. They don't necessarily need their own road frontage. And sometimes those, some of those smaller lift stations are going to probably be in the middle of a field that might not have a road to it. So they'd have to be a specific utility that would be allowed to meet that exemption. Right-of-way acquisitions. So when the, the city or tech dot or the county has to come and take five feet of the front of your lot, that changed the boundaries of your lot, but through no action of your own. So that shouldn't affect your, your legal lot, your lot of record status. So that would be an exemption as well. Emergency county permits for already connected structures. So I will say, things, things have not been platted properly since 1981 or prior. And there are houses out there on lots that don't meet our lot of record requirements. But if there's already a house there with a well or a septic tank or a water connection and they need to get another permit to fix that, they need to get a permit to fix that with the county. And then allowing increase of existing structures, we've talked about this one, of up to 50% of the footprint of the existing house. So even if it's, so there's a house there, it's not a lot of record, they could still expand the, the house footprint.
So this is an attempt to address the, I had a kid and all I'm trying to do is add one bedroom to the house.
Yes. And this apply to the city limits and the county. So if you're, so if you're, you know, you can't prove that lot of record or you don't have the time, but you're just trying to add on, yeah, another 300 feet to your house, 500 feet to your thousand-square-foot house.
Then the focus is on building the addition safely and not spending a zillion dollars to prove it's your house.
Yeah, making sure you're in your property lines. You have a survey, and we go. Yep. So that may solve some of the problems with the lot of record. So that's on the plating exemptions. So the next topic in the subdivision ETJ standards section is the final plat process. When, with the adoption of the code, we went back and forth a little bit on where, where different parts of the code were located. We had the B3 Code, the technical manual, and the development manual. What we're, we allow subdivisions to construct their public utilities two different ways. One is they can get the approval, they can go build all the infrastructure, get us to accept it, and then they come file their final plat. Or they can get everything approved, bond all the, give us fiscal charity for 125% of the improvements, record the final plat, and if they, something happens and they don't finish the project, we can go or the county can go or someone can go and finish that project with those funds. So those are, I call it the builder bond method. We, the, the bond, performance bond amount and the maintenance bond amounts ended up in our development manual and in the public improvement plan agreement language. We don't have that, those numbers listed at in the actual code. So we just need to move those in to make the, to have that all in one place. And we'd also like to clean up the public improvement plan agreement and maybe not call it a public improvement plan agreement because it's a mouthful and it's, it's a little confusing with the actual public improvement plans. What it really is, is a subdivision construction agreement. It's, it's locking down how the developer's going to build their improvements, when they're going to do it, and what fiscal they need to provide. And the fiscal amount for, once they've built the, the infrastructure and we accept it, it's a two-year bond for 25%, which covers if, if the road fails, that we have the ability to go fix it in that two-year kind of warranty period. So our recommendation for that would be to move those fiscal requirements out of development manual and clean up the, the public improvement plan agreement. And our other big one, this is, so we've been bringing those to council, those public improvement plan agreements. Once we establish the standard document, we would like to move that to an administrative review because the, the large part of that is reviewed by the public works and our city engineer to make sure the, the amounts are right and that it matches the construction plans. So we feel that that can be an administrative review. It would speed up the development process. And then I'll, I want to say the last one, but don't hold me to it. So in our city code, we require utility connections if you're within 300 feet. If you're, the edge of your development is within 300 feet of, of city water or wastewater, you have to connect to those utilities. That's actually not a very far distance. We have things in the middle of town that actually wouldn't meet that requirement. So what we're requesting or proposing to do is, one, to change that to, for wastewater, any available organized wastewater system. So that would apply to Bastaught County WCID and Tahitian. So if there's a wastewater line 305 feet away, that you would have to connect to that rather than putting in a new septic or repairing your existing, or replacing your existing. There's a lot of, that's part of the orderly development and keeping our water quality and everything else to a healthy standard. What it would not include attaching to is a municipal utility district. Municipal utility districts have established boundaries that they can serve to. So if you have a development right outside the Colony Mud, the Colony Mud cannot serve them. So they would not have a requirement to attach to that utility district.
So if I'm right next to the colony and my lot's big enough, and whoever's got the CCN on the other side, maybe it's Corx or whatever, they're not within 300 feet and I've got a lot big enough for a septic, I can do a septic?
Yep.
Okay.
I have a question, I'm sorry. So if, if, let's say they're, what'd you just said? They have to be within 300 feet?
Mm-hmm.
And when the house is built, they put in a septic. They can't just repair it? They have to hook up to us now?
So in the city limits, they can't, if they have to totally replace the septic, they have to tie on the city water if it's available. So. And we've had instances of that come to council in the past where a resident on 95, she was within the 300 feet, but with the configuration of 95 and the fact that she was the only person on that side of the street currently, she was exempt from having to connect. So I think we could, for some situations, but I, what the real, and we're proposing to extend that to half a mile. What we're looking is so that you don't have a new, brand-new subdivision that goes in with 100 homes all on septic when they could connect to a sewer system.
I didn't stand on a new development, but I just was worried about the, the resident that needs a fixes, what the cost difference is besides, I don't know what the cost of hook up to the city compared to fixing my septic.
If the water line is very close, it's usually comparable. So- So it just depends on what's going on. We've had, Ms. Pecus, she did that a while back on her house. The wastewater line was right there. It was pretty much the same price.
Well, when they hook up to the city, they now have a fee compared to their septic tank. Didn't cost them a monthly fee.
But they don't also have any maintenance requirements. The city maintains everything long-term. That's the trade-off, so.
One other question. Who would pay for the extension of that?
The developer.
Developer, oh, so what about in the case of private property, they're, who would pay for the extension of the city?
They would pay for the extend, if they have, they have to extend back to the nearest public line. If it's already there, then it's just a connection to the line.
Okay. And in the case where there's a single individual and they're replacing their septic, but now they've got to tie into the city, they're within three hundred feet, but they're not, who pays for that extension?
They would, yeah. So that's something we may look at. There may be an exception, a warrant process in there for those.
What's the tap fee for a single connection?
Three thousand dollars. Three hundred dollars is the tap fee. I saw a three.
But what does it cost them to put that line in of three hundred feet?
It depends on how much line they're running and where it's running, so. But three hundred feet is our current standard. We're suggesting extending that to half a mile. And that is comparable with other requirements in other cities.
So when you bring this back for P and Z to vet through and for council to vet through, we need to be comparing an apple to an apple. But I ask, we also very much appreciate that the reason folks move to the city is so they have clean water and they're not contributing an adverse impact to the environment. And, you know, if you want to be on a septic system, you're generally not living on Con Street in the middle of town. So, I mean, that's, that's part of why you come to town. To your point, I think, I just want to go back and make sure I'm clear. You're saying if I have, my septic system needs some repair, I can repair it. But if that repair is to the extent that I'm pulling, I got to completely rebuild the septic system, now we're having a conversation about is, are you within three hundred or some larger number of feet from the public system?
Yes, and that was the situation on ninety-five. That lot was, I think, two hundred and eighty feet away.
And council waived that?
Yeah.
Councilmember Ennis?
Well, thank you for clarifying, but I thought if they just repaired theirs.
No, you can make a repair.
You can make a repair if you can't do total replacement, yeah.
Kind of like when, okay, thank you.
And I believe Ms. Bills' point was if you were going to do a complete septic system replacement, that's, that's not going to be a couple hundred bucks. That's not just throwing in some more filter, you know?
Yeah, that could be fifteen thousand dollars.
Everybody okay? I think you have one more on subdivision.
Yes, so this is, so as Trey talked about, we've talked, that there is a process for doing, doing difference with the neighborhood regulating plan. One of the things in what we talked about, you know, with warrants and all that, is we can, you know, deviate, you know, staff level, we can deviate from the requirement that we can't get rid of it all together. So with the grid, that is a conversation's come up with some styles of development. They, they don't want to do the three-thirty block or they don't want to do the seven-twenty farm lot. They can put that request in a neighborhood regulating plan and bring that forward. But what we're wanting to add in is if they're going to do that, that they need to do a traffic impact analysis in lieu of that connection. Because that was part of the trade-off of our code, is in our previous code, we required all developments over a certain size had to do a traffic impact analysis. They are costly. They don't, you know, always take into effect the most recent, or what's going on on the property next to you that hasn't developed yet, that hasn't developed yet and they don't know what they're doing. They're not always the best method. So that was part of the grid, was the grid was going to establish parallel routes, that, those connectivity points. And so that, the traffic impact analysis wouldn't be necessary. But if you're going to remove connection points and remove streets, now you may be putting a lot of trips onto one road that, an existing road that maybe can't handle that without some improvements like an acceleration lane, deceleration lane, stoplights, or maybe needs a new stop sign now, just some one thing about basic. But, so if you're going to start removing grid elements, then you'd have to do the traffic impact analysis. So we would define, you know, when that's triggered.
Just wanted to say something that when we went through the whole B three code development process, it was kind of apparent that this was the DNA of Basher. I mean, it was the grid. And once we start changing that and removing that requirement, we're going to see all kinds of ideas that are great, and they may, and systems are going to be good. But I think we're going to lose some, I don't know, some consistency across. So I don't know how that's dealt with, but I think that's something to think about very strongly. Because once we start erasing this, we've really done a lot of work and we've said basically, it's too hard for people. And, you know, but I think they need to kind of go to the professionals and get them to see the bigger picture here. And the bigger picture is, like you said, connectivity, walkability, all the things that we talked about are in there. You can't just throw it to the wayside.
I'd just like to mention with that with Pablo, that a lot of the conversations we've had tonight is about connectivity as well, especially with the plating and the ETJ. And, I mean, it's one thing to develop a code that's flexible with signs and maybe even plating to some extent, but, I mean, the grid affects everybody. And if there's a workaround that's easy for a developer, they're going to take it. And I think it's, I think that putting the grid overlay was one of the best things we did with the B three code. And it should only be violated under very extreme circumstances, not just, I can pay this and not do that.
And this wouldn't be necessarily a pay. It would be analyzing the whole system. It is, it takes more time, takes more money. Sometimes that may not have been necessary if they just provided this. They could have put that money towards another street.
Well, there's also, there's also some outside factors that affect that connectivity, Techs out being the primary one. And we have, we don't manage Techs out, and we can't manage Techs out, but we can at least see how traffic flow and connectivity is affected downstream from wherever these projects are. So to your point, to your point, that's, I think it's one of the best things that we did, so thank you.
But I'm, the way I'm reading this is if you want to deviate from the grid, you have to do a traffic impact analysis. That doesn't mean that you get it approved. It means you've got to come back to, with the traffic impact analysis and, and to your point, come up with a really special reason why you are not able to handle, why you aren't following the grid and prove that you're not making adverse impact as a result of that. But it doesn't automatically mean that it's approved.
And I a hundred percent agree with that, but I will say, having sat on ZBA and Historic Landmark Commission and this board, you've got somebody in front of you crying about what they've had to do. And as an individual, you really have to have an identity as a board to stand up and say no. And it's hard to do. I mean, you guys do it as well and, you know, you guys make more difficult decisions than most of the other boards, but it, I mean, it's hard, whether it's somebody with a fence or somebody who wants to, you know, put a house five feet closer to a property line because there's a tree on the other side or, you know, whatever it is. It's, and the code just requiring it just makes that part easy, I mean, as well. And I understand that it's not just approved because they do it and that's a good thing. But again, I just, it, people find a way to tug at your heartstrings and sometimes it's nice just to have a code that says no.
So you're saying it's the camel knows in the tent, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah. All right.
Ms. Bills? Can you remind me again who would approve this? Would this be the planning director that would approve?
The traffic impact analysis?
No, once the deviation from the grid.
So deviations from the grid that are burying the road or changing the width of the road, those can be done by warrants. But if they want to get rid of a road entirely, that goes into a neighborhood regulating plan. If they're not seeking to change their zoning, they're going to keep their base zoning, they're trying to do, set up what the grid looks like in their development that's over three point four acres. We actually have one that's going to come forward, there's actually, there's good at planning and zoning. If planning and zoning denies them, they come to city council. And so there's actually one that's getting ready to come forward on three oh four and Agnes over there for the commercial development that's around the residential, to set up, set up what their street network's going to look like, what their block structure's going to look like.
Were you looking at me or looking at Debbie? Is it going to planning and zoning?
It's going to planning and zoning.
So that's not administratively approved?
If it meets the code, it's administered, the neighborhood regulating plan is administratively approved. If they, if they want to get rid of required features, then it has to go to the planning zoning commission.
That's what I was looking for, thank you.
So Councilmember Ennis, you're okay with that, right? That's what you wanted to hear?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I just don't think it needs to be one person approving a deviation at large. And I just wanted to make sure that my understanding is right.
Thank you.
So that is the end of the subdivisions section. The next section was general code changes.
It's been two hours. Can we have a five-minute break? So it's, we're on break. It's been two hours. The sooner we get going again, the sooner we can get done. So we are on slide forty-two, which is on page fourteen, and we're going to talk about general code changes. You're doing good, Ms. Bills. One more.
One more. One more second. So this isn't any particular topic. These are a whole conglomeration of topics, but they're things that we've gone through that we see as things that we want to make sure council's on the same page, that we need to amend these sections. And so we're bringing them forward to you and P and Z to get any feedback you have on these items. First one, this one comes up frequently for us, cellphone slash communication towers. A lot of towers I want to be two hundred, four hundred feet tall. We recently had the county building one that was a hundred feet tall and we took that, there was already a tower there, so we took it as an expansion of a non-conforming use for that site because it was a use on that site. But we need a process for new towers in town. In our place type districts, our height restrictions range from twenty-eight feet to seventy feet tall, which a lot of towers are going to exceed seventy feet. In cellphone towers, they're not always compatible with all place types. So I don't know that residential neighborhoods necessarily want one in the middle of the neighborhood. So our recommendation would be to allow towers of any height in our place type employment center, which is meant for larger tracts, higher intensity uses, business parks, those kind of things. Still, we'll have to follow our plating site plan building process if it's applicable to that site. And our question is all, is our, do you want us to come up with a process for allowing a cellphone or communication tower in other place types? So your P two, which is your rural district, or your P five, which is our commercial district. The previous code had the conditional use permit, which had to go both the P and Z and city council as an ordinance, which seems like maybe that's a lot of a requirement. So maybe that we want to establish some minimum requirements and propose an admin or some kind of public process depending on, you know, what zone that's, place type it's going to go in. And then we'd also, as we write that code amendment, to make sure it's in line with any federal communication commission requirements. There are some federal regulations that will trump the city, so.
So you want to, Mr. City Manager, you want us to talk about towers now or let her get done with everything and then come back? Okay.
Fences. So fences were one that we talked about during the development of the code. We included standards in the pattern book, which is applicable to Iredelle Historic District, but we didn't establish standards for the remainder of town. So in the Iredelle Historic District, in the last page of the pattern book, there are requirements for fences that you have a three-foot limit in the front yard with a twenty percent openness to the fence, so, you know, wrought iron or picket fence. And that the, you can go to a six-foot tall privacy fence, starting in, it's ten foot from the front of the house is where that starts. So from, from ten feet back of your house forward, it has to be a three-foot tall fence. The code doesn't require certificate of appropriateness if it meets the pattern book. So we've been taking ones that do not meet the pattern book to the Historic Landmark Commission for, for things that they want additional height, they want it to, you know, the privacy fence to go a little bit further forward, those kind of things. So what we'd like to do, and in the rest of town, the reading of the code is we have allowable encroachments in the first layer and we don't allow fences as an encroachment in the first layer. So I think that's something we just need to address in the rest of town. Has it actually come up yet in the rest of town? I feel that it will come up in the rest of town. So just a reminder, the Iredelle Historic District.
So it is or is not allowed in the Iredelle District?
Fences, fences are allowed in the front yards. The front yard is the big question. So in the front yard, which is in front of your house and then ten foot back by the pattern book, they're allowed, but they're allowed at three foot in height and they have a certain openness they have to do.
In all of the Iredelle District?
In all the Iredelle District, which is this entire yellow area of town. Which is in place to make sure, you know, it's, that you're kind of meeting the established standards in town. But then we don't have, we don't, I don't know if we actually mentioned the word fence in the rest of the code. So we would like to address that either, because right now there's, if we said blanket, they're allowed in the front yard, there's nothing stopping someone in Riverside Grove from building a eight-foot tall fence in their front yard. Okay, privacy fence? The intent of the code was that interface between the public and private realm, so we've been reading that as they're not allowed in the first layer. So I think that's just something we need to come up with a standard and apply. I don't think it needs to be overly strict. I just think we need one to address the issue. For, just a reminder, for layers, what I'm talking about, we, instead of setbacks, we ended up with build two lines and then layers that help, help with the context of your house to the street. So your first layer is everything in front of the house, your second layer is twenty foot back from the front of the house, and then everything behind that is the third layer. If you're on a corner lot, everything in front of the side yard house is first layer. Everything after that is second and third, so essentially third layer. So that determines where your parking can be, where your accessory dwelling units can be, those kind of things. So for our recommendations, the Historic Landmark Commission has been, since all the deviations, the fence standards in the Iredelle District have been coming to them, they've been talking about this. I think it's so far, doing a by right four-foot allowance and then establishing some base styles for the Iredelle District that people can build by right. And then if they want to do something different than that, it would go back to HLC. But HLC has been looking at what those standards should be to put into the pattern book. So if council is on board with that, they would come back with recommendations to P and Z that would then come to council. Yeah, for the rest of the, outside the historic district staff, we'll look at what are logical fence standards for the rest of town. A lot of things are in planned development district, would have their own fence standards for residential. So it's more actually commercial properties that we're probably looking at. And then deviations, we would recommend being approved by warrants by the planning director. So it would be an administrative process with clearly defined parameters on that. Manufactured housing is another one. So manufactured, the way our code is written, we allow manufactured housing in P one, P two, and P three by right. So if someone wants to bring in a manufactured house, as long as it meets the frontage requirements and the build two lines and some of the other standards in chapter six, they can bring those in in any district in town other than the planned development districts if they don't allow them. What we don't adequately do is define the difference between a mobile home and a manufactured housing prop, structure. So anything constructed before nineteen seventy-six was a mobile home. Those were built without any standard or inspection process. Anything built after nineteen, or seventy-six or after should have been inspected by the Department of Housing and Urban Development and have a sticker in it that says that it was inspected. One of the other questions we have is, so if that's the base requirement, that would allow someone to move in a nineteen seventy-six manufactured house into the city limits? Because it has been inspected by HUD and has a sticker. So that's a question if, at the end, if you guys have mulled that over and would like to give us some feedback on, if you could do that.
Alan might have some feedback. Alan might have some feedback for us as well on that topic.
Yes, and there are some state requirements on that as well. I don't know that you can outright outlaw manufactured housing. I know you can put some limitations on them, so.
I know Mayor Council and P&amp;Z, it seems silly to even talk about it, but yes, you can ban the pre-76 structures altogether. No one can relocate one of those into town. I don't know if that happens or not. When it comes to the post-76 structures, you cannot outlaw them altogether. They have a right to go somewhere. The Courts of Appell limiting that to mobile home parks, if that's what you wanted to do. But otherwise, they can go anywhere that a site-built home could. If it is a modular house, if it is what's typically called a single-wide, you can restrict those further, but they still have a right to go somewhere. Can you say at some point, you have enough, you hit capacity and no more? That's never been explored.
So that's, yeah. One, the recommendation staff would make is doing more research on that topic, but at the bare minimum, making sure we've adequately addressed the difference between mobile home and manufactured homes for the code. Short-term rentals, this is one that all of our codes have been silent on up till, well, our zoning codes have been silent on. We've been doing some research recently, and under the International Residential Code and the International Building Code, there are requirements in both of those that would require a short-term rental to have a certificate of occupancy. There are certain health, safety requirements that are supposed to be in short-term rentals, which are usually defined as a single-family resident that's available for short-term rent, or a lodging house where you might be renting out rooms, so more of the bed and breakfast type. We've not been previously addressing that. Our international codes do allow us to, or require us to issue certificates of occupancies on those, so that's something that if, what staff intends to start enforcing that unless we get other direction from council.
How many of them currently exist with certificates of occupancy? I'm a little scared to ask.
I would assume none. But I think some, bed and breakfast do, that were official bed and breakfast, but actual short-term rentals, I don't believe any do. Because that's, again, we'd been silent on the issue, hadn't been requiring it, so.
Councilman Brines?
How often would you recommend they, I mean, if it's a certificate of appropriateness, it's a one-time rent?
It's a certificate of occupancy.
I mean, occupancy, it would be a one-time certificate.
I would have to check with Building and Fire. It may be something that has to be, because it's kind of under the lodging classification, it may need a yearly, when we get to a yearly inspection program, it may be something that needs to be on the schedule, it may just be if, when they change.
That's where I'm going to, is the difference between a certificate and a license, seem like if you had a certificate, it'd be a one-time thing. If it also carried with it a license, you know, maybe that's something we need to look at, because then it brings up a certain amount of inspection every year, two years, or whatever.
Yeah, and we can, we can look at those requirements and bring some ideas back when we're.
Okay, thanks.
I have to say something. I know there's other municipalities, and they place a limit on the number of short-term rentals in areas, so that you don't have a bunch of them in concentrated areas, so to distribute it out. There's a lot of neighbors who complain that during, say, South by Southwest or something like that, their neighborhoods are turning into budget short-term rentals, so it's something to consider as well.
We're not, yeah, we're not coming at this from a perspective of it's been a problem anyone's brought up, but it's something that it's a health, safety requirement in the case, so.
Really quick, just whereas I agree that if it's going to happen in the city, it's kind of a business, the city should, I think, have a say in it, but at the same time, these are the kind of things we're kind of looking to regulate through nuisance, and it sounds like we don't have a nuisance, and so just tread lightly.
Demolition and relocation permits. So in the, with the adoption of the B3 codes and with the adoption of the Iredelle Historic District and the language that got written into Chapter 9, it now requires any structure in the historic, Iredelle Historic District, regardless of age, has to come before the Historic Landmark Commission if they want to demolish or relocate the house. The district, as the yellow map showed earlier, is a fairly large area. Staff would recommend maybe that we establish a minimum age that a structure has to be before it needs that certificate of appropriateness, because otherwise it may catch a lot of properties that do not have any historic value.
Do we have a starting point on where that minimum age would be?
So to be considered historic, something has to be 50, over 50 years old.
So that would be our starting point?
Yeah.
So are you historic, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Is that defined in our ordinance?
It's not defined in our ordinance, that's the, for the National Register, it has to be at least 50 years old, so we could do a time period that's older than that as well, or younger. But that's general guidelines from the Interior, Secretary of the Interior, is 50 years.
So we're going to tell a private property owner that if they wanted to tear down their house that was more than 50 years old, they had to go to HLC first?
Yes.
Have you had any pushback on that?
We've had, the Methodist Church went to HLC last week with two structures that were built in the 40s, and the HLC did approve the demolition permits on those, a relocation in that case.
I don't think there's ever been a case where HLC has turned down a demolition. Of course, there's always a first time.
Well, my question would mainly, because, you know, we're a private property, proud property owners kind of state, and I could see some cowboy saying, you ain't going to tell me whether I can move my house and tear it down or not. It's just something that popped into my little head.
And these are for properties in the Iredelle Historic District that are not also having, holding a designation. So if they're a historic landmark, a local historic landmark, a state or national register landmark, those would still have to go to HLC. We're talking about the, you know, a house up on, you know, Mesquite Street that was, could have been built in 1984 and wasn't well-constructed that they want to replace, would have to go, so.
Speaking from that standpoint, were you going to say something?
I'll wait. Go ahead.
It might be one of those situations where if it's a landmark of the three stripes, it goes to HLC. If it's not a landmark, then it can be administratively approved. I don't know how, maybe this is something HLC needs to look at and come back to council with a recommendation, but, you know, it seemed like that'd be an easier way to go about this.
The issue that I've seen is contributing characteristics, you know, the structures facing the street, in the case of the, of the first night of Methodist Church, those two structures were individual houses facing the street, were acquired over time, and they could rebuild and have a structure facing away and put the backs up.
Well, I will say, our B3 code does prohibit you from, you have to have that interaction with the street front, so the current code-
But it could be one lone structure, it could, there's-
Yeah, it may not be of the same size and scale, so.
I have a question. If, if they had to go to, like, HLC, Historical Landmark, does that cost a fee of $3600?
It is $58.
Just curious.
$58.
Oh, okay. Just curious what the fee was for that.
That one, I think that one's $106. It's because we have to do notification to the surrounding property owner. So yes, there's a fee associated with that.
But $106, not $3600?
Yeah, no, $106.
In the old code, you had to have a permit to demolish, too.
And you have to get a demolition permit, which-
Is that on top of HLC's?
Yes, that's on top, and I don't know what that is off the top of my head. I will say, a building that is designated by the building official as structurally damaged or needing to be demolished is exempt from this requirement, so. So if it's a house that's been flooded, or, you know, burned and needs to be torn down, or it's just in a state of disrepair that it cannot be.
Yeah, let's hope so. Let's, if it's structurally unsound, and now we're going to make you pay a permit to go get permission to tear down something we're yelling at you to tear down, like, come on. Yay, that's good.
And then that was my last general issue, so.
Okay, and then do you want us to jump over to the very end? Is that what we're supposed to do?
Yeah. So staff has kind of gone through these and come up with some prioritized recommendations of where we kind of see them. Y'all may have different thoughts, so.
Slide 60 on Page 20, the bottom slide on Page 20.
So for our high priority item, our plan is to bring those back to the 14Z in the next three to four months. That would get, hopefully that'll be enough time, right? Once we get the final list together, we'll come up, and that may give us a couple meetings in there if we need to workshop a specific item to get some feedback, we could do that. Medium priority, we would, once we have a, get closer to adopting the high priority, we'd be able to schedule out the medium, and same with the low priority. So for high priority in the development process and DRC recommendations, we see redefining the DRC review responsibilities, streamlining and clarifying the warrant process, making sure the neighborhood regulating plan with the, you know, what is administratively approved and what is the doing different that needs to come before P&amp;Z and then possibly council. And then we would like to create that infill process for sites smaller than 3.4 acres, and then move the enhanced permit language into the B3 code. Medium priority is creating an amendment process for planned development districts to bring them closer into compliance with our B3 code, and adopting that place type conversion table that would, that's going to largely apply to the base districts that are already in the PDD, so that we're, we have a starting place to go with those ordinances, and then establishing how those law of occupation standards and the standards of Chapter 6 will apply to the PDD is when the, when the planned development document is silent on those types of standards. For subdivision in ETJ, high priority items is to create a traffic impact analysis requirement when changing the grid, adding the additional plating exemptions into Chapter 1, and then extending the water and wastewater connection requirements. Medium priority, these are going to be the establishing the ETJ subdivision standards of the medium priority, because that is going to take some more staff time and resources to research and write those standards. And then the low priority, and I say low just because I know we may need to vet some things through legal, so that may just have a little bit more lead time. We could, may be able to weave them in when we have time. But move the fiscal requirements and rewrite the boilerplate for the PIPA. Examine, you know, a process for accepting or approving an access easement or a private road for pre-1981 properties, and then how we're going to work with the county to extend our stormwater drainage requirements outside of the subdivision process to other property. General code changes, adding communication tower standards and processes, because this is something we get asked frequently, and with 5G, I think that's all driving factors for new towers. The short, with short-term rentals, it's already in the code, so we can start enforcing that now. And then addressing the definition of manufactured housing. Medium is working with HLC to come up with recommendations for the fences in the pattern book, and establishing a standard outside of the Iredelle District, and researching what age to set possibly for the demolition or relocation requirement. And then signs are high priority, to create standards along 71 and the other corridors, allowing internal illumination on pylon signs, allowing internal illumination either by warrant or by some other, you know, process of the light output. Continue not to allow digital signs, and then define the sign administrator. Medium would be for staff to do some additional research and bring back some recommendations on directional and incidental sign standards, and then clarify, we have a list of about temporary permits to clarify when a permit is actually needed, and when they're just a, you can only do these, on these times and dates. And then a low priority, because again, this one's going to take time to do some research and maybe some outside resources, is to look at the corridors into Bastrop and create corridor signs. And so we are addressing, you know, there aren't, there are not, there are currently not too many signs on 969. There are a lot more signs on 71, and making sure we're addressing sign permits in those areas appropriately. And that's-
Holy cow. On the signs, if you go back two slides on the high, I feel like from the conversation that we had, one of the things that I think we need to add is clarifying the cost of the permits and considering a period of time that we waive, waive the fee while we're waiting to adopt. That part of it, I don't really see in your high list, and I, and I believe the folks that came and spoke with us tonight, and just the general public, we really need to address that as soon as we can. Is everybody okay with that? I'm kind of seeing nods. Well, we are certainly going to have a conversation, but I would just like to say to the city manager, our assistant city manager, and Jennifer, just, and I know you had staff helping you put some of this together, really, really a good job of a ton of information, so. All right, Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yeah, on Slide 67, we talked about creating standards for 71, what was, we discussed adding portions of Highway 95 from 71 to Chestnut. We may need to expand that to the other side of 71 to include that commercial district also, because of-
Of Jackson?
Yes. And so I would like to take that into consideration.
And I will say, like, Old Austin Highway would not be included in this, so, one of the gentlemen, Anytime Fitness is on Hasler Shores, that's a street leading into a residential neighborhood, so.
Good.
We'd have, we may need to-
So that wouldn't be a corridor, but it could be the band sign-
That would not be the corridor, but that may be another basic standard we need to look at.
Yeah, but the, like, a three-foot letters-on-a-band-sign kind of thing could be acceptable. Yeah, okay.
And this may be more for city attorney, but maybe I'm being overly wary, but any, anything we talk about on manufactured housing, does some of the state's preemptive initiatives affect that process relative to International Building Codes? I mean, am I being overly cautious?
You're not, Mayor Pro Tim. Yes, there is a level of preemption already in place. Those who lobby for the manufactured housing industry have better access than we do. And so when it comes to how those structures are constructed, as long as they have that state or federal seal on them, we can't regulate them. Now, if somebody gets creative and starts experiencing some southern ingenuity and ripping into walls, adding on rooms, adding on porches, that sort of work is covered by our building codes, because they pierced the seal of those manufactured structures. But for the most part, if it's what's called an industrialized housing, which is also known as modular, it's assembled on the site through preformed materials, those can go anywhere that a site-built brick-and-mortar house could go. We could have standards that require them to have the same vegetation, screening, those sorts of things, but otherwise, they can already go anywhere a site-built home could go. If it's delivered on wheels and one or more pieces and put together, you can be a little bit more strict on where those can go. But there already is that level of preemption. We cannot regulate how they're installed or how they're transported. The state completely occupies that field. Yes, sir.
And I, on Slide 63, which is at the bottom of Page 21, the first thing you have under high is require the traffic impact analysis when changing the grid. I believe that's something that P&amp;Z needs to vet through, like, because we're, based on Dr. Lassen's comments and the, all the effort that we put into it, to your point, as soon as there's an open hole, then there's a point that you, yeah, that's what Matt said, so. Council, any other items? There's a, thank you in advance to planning and zoning, because you're going to be vetting a lot of stuff before we see it, so, thank you again. I have to share with you that council, at the break, Councilmember Rogers stood up, walked over to me and said, "Don't ever put me on planning and zoning," so. Really appreciate the work that you guys put in. The decisions that you make, and you know that we take your opinion very, very seriously, the decisions that you make truly impact the community- impact the community for, for decades to come, to Pablo's point and so many of the points that have been made early, it's very, very much appreciated. It's serious stuff, and it's, it's all a balancing act. We, we want to keep Bastrop, Bastrop, we want to be fair, we, we have property rights, there's a lot of things to balance to make sure that we're doing, doing a reasonable thing. Madam Chair?
And while we're vetting a lot of this that we've talked about tonight, we're also going to be starting our review of our comprehensive plan, because I think they all go hand-in-hand to keep Bastrop, Bastrop, and to make sure that that plan that we've worked on so long and so hard doesn't get put on the shelf, and it's a living document also. But something else will be due, may have sandwiches more than once, so.
We might have to up their budget for meals, Mr. City Manager. We do have an executive session item, and I'm, I'm just touching base again, is anybody on P and Z, is there something you're dying to say? Okay, we do need to go into executive session, I, I will tell you in advance, I don't think it's going to take a really long time, but we're, there's some information that we're wanting all of us to hear. Colin, you'll let me know when we're, when we are good to go. We will be going into executive session, City Council and Planning and Zoning shall convene.
I need to step out, I live in Unit 6.
Thank you. Councilmember Rogers will be recusing herself from this executive session. We will be in City Council and P and Z will shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.072 to receive a report from legal counsel regarding Pine Forest Unit 6 development. It is 9:09, and we are in executive session. Colin, you'll let me know when we're good. All right, it is 9:33, we are out of executive session. With regards to item number four, there will be no actions taken as a result of executive session, so on item 5A, it is 9:33. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion for the Bastrop City Council to adjourn.
A second. I have a motion and a second by acclamation. City Council is adjourned. Madam Chair?
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second. So ordered.
Thank you guys again, and staff, thank you again for a really good presentation, and it will be in the drop box where folks can have access to it. Good night, Councilmember Jackson.
Good night, it was a very good meeting.